Preston Ismail, the manager of group sales and partnerships for the Hamilton Bulldogs, to promote the 5th Annual First Responders Event on Saturday, January 27, 2018. The date being requested should appear December 6, 2017. There is an added presentation, item 7.1, HSR Update, that has been distributed to all of you on yellow. Discussion, item 8.2, the Grants Funding Program Update, FCS 17083. This report has been pulled from today's agenda and will come forward to the November 15 GIC. As well, since that item 8.2 has been removed, item 11.1A2, the Escarpment Rehabilitation and Strategy Plan, will not be addressed on today's agenda and will remain on the OBL. And lastly, added item 12.3, the HSR matter, which will be distributed to you in closed session pursuant to Section 8.1, Subsection B of the City's procedural bylaw in the Municipal Act, as the subject matter pertains to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including city employees. The city managers requesting committee's consideration with respect to moving up items 7.1 and 12.3 as they are related, and a lot of the senior staff needs to be at a QP matter this afternoon.
So may I please have a motion to approve the agenda, including moving 7.1 and 12.3 to the top of the agenda? All those in favor? Oh, I need a mover in a second, or sorry. Councilor Ferguson, sorry, Councilor Whitehead and Councilor Farr, all those in favor? Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none. Before we start, today is Bring Your Child to Work Day. So we have two individuals in the audience right now that are prepared to be bored out of their minds. Jason Thorne's daughter, Avery. Avery, give us a wave. Last time I saw Avery was at the 1812 Battle, so she was dressed so differently. And Dan McKinnon has brought his friend's son, James, and apparently now his friend owes him a huge favor. Welcome, James. So let's go to the roadmap. Dan McKinnon, General Manager of Public Works, will introduce the presentation. And Debbie Adele Vidove, sorry, Director of Transit, will continue the presentation respecting the HSR update. Dan?
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. Just while Debbie's getting set up there, I wanted to just add a bit to what Debbie's going to be presenting. And this is respecting the spike that we've seen in cancellations with respect to HSR service. Of all the divisions in Public Works, there's no question that transit is the most sensitive to absenteeism, has a direct relationship to our service levels, and I think that's what we've been experiencing over the last number of weeks. So we wanted to update you on that, so that committee and council has a better understanding of that. But I guess the other thing I wanted to do was just thank Debbie and her team. I can tell you that they spent the entire weekend and Monday, Tuesday this week crunching through data, and I think it was close to 9:00 o'clock last night when we left putting the finishing touches on this presentation. So just a thanks to Deb and her team for working through all the data to try to get ready for this presentation today. So that's it, and I'll hand it off to Deb.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Good morning, Madam Deputy Mayor, members of committee. So, okay, perfect. Okay, so I want to begin by stating that I and my team recognize that transit is a critical service for residents, and the cancellation of service, we don't take lightly. I also want to say at this point, too, that it's important that you all understand that we have a significant and large group of operators that are dedicated HSR employees that come in to work seven days a week, 24 hours a day, not 24 hours a day, but seven days a week, 365 days a year, and who are committed to delivering that service to the public. The job as an operator is very demanding, and I guess to credit to the staff is they make it look really easy. They look, it looks like they're just in a bus, just driving, and you know, what is so complicated about that? But the fact of the matter is, you know, there are significant challenges that my staff are faced with on a daily basis. I want to tell you about one that happened this morning. One of my female operators, after being on shift for about three hours, had to stop to go use the facilities. When she came back to her bus, there was a customer waiting there who was upset that he was going to be late for his job, but she needed to go to the washroom. He responded in a way which is not acceptable, and verbally assaulted her and then threw his hot coffee on her. So this is what, this is what our staff, or this is what our drivers are facing with each day. They have, on an average, 55,000 interactions with our residents, and for the most part, our customers are phenomenal, appreciative, and treat our staff with respect. But there are individuals out there that take out their frustration on our operators. I reached out to her this morning, just to see how she was doing. She was in tears, and she said to me, she goes, "What did I do wrong?" And I said, "You did nothing wrong. You had to go to the washroom." I said, "Don't let somebody's actions like that, you know, shape your day, or make you think that you've done something wrong." And then I guess the most telling part for me was when she said to me, "I've driven a bus for 15 years, and in 15 years, nobody has ever reached out to me to see if I'm okay." So that tells me a lot in regards to what we're going to be talking about today, which is with driving these cancellations and the absenteeism. This is what our staff are facing, and we have some opportunities and some work to do on the, on the part of management, to change that around, so that we are supporting our staff that are out there. I also want to mention at this point in time, and it goes without saying, that council has made significant investments in transit in the past 10 years. We have an operating budget, a gross operating budget of approximately $120 million. We're a big, we're a big slice of the pie. In the last 10 years, you've increased our operating budget in excess of $40 million. We've added over 126,000 hours of service in the last 10 years, 119 additional staff, and 70 additional buses. And then, as of 2017, your commitment towards the PTIF, to the PTIF capital projects, to the tune of $72 million. So your commitment to transit is there, and it is certainly appreciated by the men and women that work there. So, so what's happening? So we've seen a significant spike in canceled service. We have an ongoing, an ongoing challenge with absenteeism, and we're having a decreased ability to mitigate those, those additional hours. So what that chart is showing you there is that our current absence rate is about 19%. When we plan our service and look at our workforce, we plan for an absence rate around, at 8%. That was what we have been doing historically. We haven't had an absence rate of 8% since 2005. And as you can see, it's gradually been increasing. So in order to try to mitigate the canceled service on the street, what we have been historically using as a means to do that is accessing overtime in order to not cancel the buses on the street when the operators don't, aren't available for work. As, as you can appreciate, accessing overtime is voluntary, so we are relying on people's ability to come in and do extra for us. So the two specific mitigation strategies that we have, one is in regards to applying to the ministry to ask for permission to work in excess hours. We currently have an excess hours permission to work overtime to 60 hours per employee. And typically, in the past, we asked them to increase that by an additional eight hours, so that provides us more access to workforce in order to put the service on the street. The second lever that we can pull in order to not cancel service on the street is to access a group of operators that we call wind downers. And what a wind downer is, is when you retire from the HSR, you have an opportunity to come back and work for us up to 24 hours at straight time, and that helps us to mitigate what we need to do, so that we're not canceling service. We typically go to the union executive and ask for an increase to those hours from 24 to 32, and that has shown us some success in the past in order to not cancel service. So presently, up until yesterday, we have not had those two mitigation strategies available to us. So as of yesterday, we got confirmation from the union executive that they were willing to allow us to increase our excess hours to 68 hours, and access to those wind downer employees to the 32 hours. So that, in the short term, will allow us to put the service on the road and to try to minimize cancellations. This is a short-term issue, this is a short-term strategy to address the issue, but there's still a risk that is inherent in that, because we have to rely on operators to come in and work overtime. So in order to, to avoid this in the future, we're going to be reviewing all our strategies. One specific in regards to attendance management, we've identified the resource and the funding for an attendance management person to focus on dealing with the absenteeism. And we're also looking at the data and drilling down to address what our workforce issues are, and review that the same. So just want to talk a little bit about what absenteeism. We have two types of absenteeism. We have controlled absences, and controlled absences are people who are on vacation. So we know they're going to be on vacation, and we, and we schedule to fill their work while they're on vacation. It's the uncontrolled absences that are the root cause of our cancellations right now. So those are long-term disability, short-term disability, WSIB, parental leave, leave of absences, and then, of course, day of absences. So in the morning, or before a shift, when an operator calls in sick or has an emergency leave, date that they need to take. And as I said earlier, historically, our uncontrolled absence rate, when we plan for it, we've planned at 8%, and now our actuals are showing that it's much higher, closer to 19%. So this chart demonstrates what the hours of canceled service that we've had since 2010. And now I want to show you what that same canceled service would have looked like if we didn't have the ability to increase the overtime hours and access the wind downers. So if you look from the line to the right, that, those bars in red would have been blue had we had not had those mitigation strategies that we haven't been able to access so far to this date. So our short-term and midterm mitigation strategies, again, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be reinstating that role of the attendance management person to address the absenteeism. We've canceled any charters, so we are not accepting any more charters until we get this under control, so we're not taking somebody out of the service on the street to provide that charter service. We had eight new operators start this Monday, another six coming five weeks later, so that's an additional 14 staff that we will have available to us to, to again, mitigate the cancellations. We're going to be developing a policy specific around complement control. For us, that is very dynamic. We have people retiring, going on, accessing STD or long-term disability, so we need to have a policy around that, so we can be more agile as we try to ramp up our complements, so we are not left in a situation where we're relying on overtime to put service on the street. And we're also going to be reviewing opportunities in the way that we schedule our workforce. So when we have our hours that we're going to put out on the street, and we go to schedule the actual work that the operators are working, we're looking at where we can get some efficiencies in there, so that we are not canceling service on the street. Next steps is, I'm back in front of you in January for the Transit Day, so I'm going to be reporting back on the outcomes on our short-term mitigation strategies, and we'll provide you frequent and regular updates as to how we are progressing as we work through this for the remainder of the year. So at this point, I have some background slides with some more data, specific to what has been said out there in the public and social media, as to what the, the causes and why we are here today. So I'm happy to go through this, or take questions at this point. Do you want me to keep going? Okay. So just some background data. So a lot of buzz out there that we're not hiring enough operators. So the data is telling us, the facts are, we hired 37 new operators in 2017, which includes the 14 that we're, we have on deck. Currently, for 2017, we had 222 operators that have retired. So improvements to the operator experience, there's been a lot of talk about the conditions for the operator. You know, we've increased running time in the last two years, as part of the first two years of the tenure strategy. And when I say running time, that's the time it takes the bus to get from one end of the line to the next. So within that timeframe, we've, we've added more running time. We've also increased the recovery time in that running time. So what that means is that we build in extra time from getting from point A to point B, so that if you are late within that route, you can make up the time at the end of the line, so you start your next trip on time. So that speaks to reliability of service. We've added five locations of end-of-the-line washroom facilities for our operators, so that they have the ability to access those services. We are almost complete in installing all our closed-circuit surveillance cameras on our entire fleet, so that we can have the ability to identify individuals who, you know, may, may be causing angst for our operators, to give them and provide them a little bit more security. We've done a lot of work with our Dennis and Culture Survey projects, where we are engaging the frontline staff, we did workshops, and we're going to them to get their feedback as to what we can do better. We've developed an employee suggestion program that we're going to be rolling out shortly, and also a job shadowing program, so that everybody can understand and start getting engaged. And finally, we're going to be holding kaizen events, which is basically letting us go to the frontline staff, getting them to tell us what the issues are, and having them work through what the issues are to try to resolve those. In regards to voluntary operator turnover, so our current voluntary, so people leaving the organization voluntarily, we're at 1.6%. The average for the city is approximately 2%, so we're well below that. So people aren't leaving us more than they are for voluntary reasons in the rest of the organization. The same for retirements. You know, we're lower than the rest of the city with retirements, and then of those operators, as I mentioned earlier, who retire and who enter the wind down program, 30% of them are staying around and working for us, again, to deliver the service. Working overtime, so we allow operators, on a voluntary basis, to work overtime as per the collective agreement. So we looked at the top 20 operators who are working the most for us, who are maxing out those 68 hours, day, week after week, and, and they are taking very few sick leave days or sick time at all. So they're out there, they're working, and they're consistently working. You know, right now, we have about 100 operators that have worked more than 300 hours of overtime to date this year. So in regards to scheduling limitations, so this speaks to operators who are coming in and asking for time off, because they have personal, you know, they have lives, they have family, they have commitments. Obviously, with this high absenteeism rate, it's diminishing our ability to be able to give them that time off. So we implemented a shift giveaway program back before the summer, which really allows them to give a shift away, and gives them the time off, but allows them to get somebody to work their shift for them, so we're not creating overtime and we're not canceling And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And I think on behalf of council, I hope you can let that operator know how sorry we are that this happened to her. So we have a long list here, starting with Councilor Whitehead.
Thank you, Debbie. I guess my first question, I noticed that MetroLink's representatives are here. Is there rationale for that?
Sorry.
Is there none?
Apparently not.
Okay. The second question I, the question, the second question I have is, you had indicated, you know, and I really appreciate the sincere and passionate story about the individual this morning, but we, we've had drivers, and you've identified this, it's not always an easy job, and we've seen the emails. And you know, I remember a driver being spit at, and Murray contacting him directly. So it's not the first time that management has contacted people that've had a tough day. So I'm not, I think that's great, but I would just want to make sure that, that there has been a practice of doing that. Whether it's consistent or not, I'm not clear, but I know that in that particular case, that driver was contacted. I also know that at one time, and I attended one two years ago, where there was employee appreciation barbecue at the HSR, I was just saying thank you to the drivers. And I know I talked to a lot of the drivers when I attended that. And as far as the, the work culture or the environment, you know, I heard a lot of very positive things. I didn't hear anything negative in respect, in respect to the relationships with management. You didn't touch on this, but there has been a change in management. Is that correct?
Debbie?
Through the chair. So in, since, since my arrival last September, I've had three of my current managed, the management staff leave the organization. In August, we restructured the entire transit division around what our core focuses are in, in delivering our service. And I do now have three new managers in roles at, at HSR.
So there's been, so there's been a management shift, which always is a challenge, because there's a transition, and I understand and appreciate that. But it's also my understanding that one of the individuals that is no longer with us was well-respected by the union, as well as the drivers. He's no longer with us, is that correct?
That's correct. Through the chair.
Thank you, Debbie.
So through the chair. To me, and you know, I've talked, I've talked to drivers, I can tell you that my daughter and my son now take public transit, they actually diaritize all the challenges and issues they're having. In fact, on Sunday night, I actually picked my daughter up from work, because she can't rely on the bus anymore. And we, we watched for that, that bus that was supposed to be there at 10:40. Never arrived. So, and she's got a whole diary of this, of just the one bus. She's got a diary of other buses. So, you know, we're getting calls on people that are missing work, are getting docked from work, so it really has a profound impact on the people that become to rely on the public transit. And that's why it's an acute issue now. And I guess my concern is because the attendance absenteeism has risen, certainly in the last, I would say, we're getting emails probably for the last, you know, I've sent you a few of those, in the last, I would say, month, but it seems to be climbing. And I haven't said this formally, and the union hasn't announced it, but it seems to me, coming from a laborer myself, that this is maybe not a formalized job action, but it appears to be a job action. Do you have any comments on that?
Through the chair. So what myself and my team have been working on in the last few days is drilling down to the data, and what the numbers are telling us is that we are experiencing, the reason that we are canceling the service to the level that we are is because we have not had those mitigation strategies available to us to try to not cancel the service on the street. And what our numbers are telling us is that it's an absenteeism issue and a spike in that, and we've hit the saturation point, based on the workforce that we currently have.
Counselor?
Yeah, and I think the question I'm asking, is it all of a sudden that these same drivers that have been dedicated and committed to providing great service in this community, this, this spike is like, is it a flu season? Is it, is there some? To me, it appears that it's more organized than it is just a blip in, on the radar. And I'm wondering, through your analysis and assessment, have you come to the same conclusion?
Debbie?
Through the chair. When we look at the numbers and, and the level that people, that we're not filling the work at, it is telling us that we're having an absenteeism issue. I haven't been able to, the numbers haven't supported whether or not this is a job action, as you're referring.
Counselor? Oh, sorry.
Okay, so you're indicating that the significant spike, spike, public health is telling us as we're entering into flu season. We're not there yet. You have been able to rationalize at this point why you have that spike right now?
Through the chair, I guess I can talk a little bit about the uncontrolled absences. We have seen a significant increase in the number of employees who are on LTD and STD, and that's also impacting our ability to put the, the service on the road. It could be that some drivers who have been, or operators who have been working throughout the summer, and working those extra shifts now with the children back at school and family commitments, that their flexibility around being able to come in and work for us through the summer months could contribute to it as well. In the summer, we put out less service than we do in, in, starting in September. So because we're putting out more service, and if we're, and we're relying on that same pool of operators, it's also impacting our ability to not cancel service.
Counselor?
Appreciate it. So you have ruled out that job action informally is taking place?
Through the chair, our data does not support that at this time.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you. 68 hours. Now, I know that there's an organization, I can't remember what it's called, but it takes a look at amount of hours that a driver could provide in a week without now impacting their mental state and their ability to provide a safe, you know, a safe drive for their, their, in the truck business, or whether it's in the transit business. What is that safe number that they've, what is that, that threshold that's been defined by, I think it's called the Health Safety, or Transportation Safety Branch? What is that number?
Through, through the chair, I'm not familiar with that particular study that you're referring to, but what I can tell you is that relying on operators to work overtime in order to be able to deliver the service is not a sustainable strategy. So I think it would vary between operators. You know, some people can work longer hours and do that successfully and consistently without an impact to their health, and other individuals, you know, don't have the capacity or potentially want to work those extra hours in order to deliver the service.
Counselor?
So you've asked for the exemption, I think you said the target, or what the threshold was in respect to, I guess, the Ministry of Labor, or whoever regulates it, was 60 hours? Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct. We currently have an exempt, well, as of, before yesterday, or as of today, so before today, sorry, we had an exemption for 60 hours.
And now you're, now you're up to 68 hours.
Through the chair, that's correct. Effective today till the end of this board period, our drivers' board period, which is January 1, 2018, we now have the ability to have, ask people to work in excess of that 60 hours to 68 hours, and again, on a voluntary basis. So we are not forcing anyone to work overtime. It's strictly at a volunteer, voluntary basis.
Give you some flexibility.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, Debbie, through the chair.
Thank you.
Through the chair, the, you said 8% target, and in the industry I worked in, it was 3% to 5% a target for absenteeism. So what is the industry standard in transit for absenteeism?
Through the chair, I've reached out to our counterparts in the GTHA, and to ask them what their current experiences are in regards to absence rates, and the range is between 10 and 12%. And I want to just clarify that, you know, every organization reports absenteeism rates in different manners. They have different provisions within their collective agreement that allow more flexibility to filling work, time off, but, you know, I can say with quite confidence, it's in the range between 10 and 12%.
Thank you.
So best practices in the transit industry exceeds, certainly the private sector, by over 8%?
Through the chair, that's correct. It's the nature of the business, and you know, my long hours, you know, split shifts, working, working, sorry, long hours, split shifts, working, you know, through holidays, and just the nature of the interaction constantly with, with people, and, and the driving and traffic, and, and all of those job requirements. all of those job requirements that they face day in and day out, you know, it is typical that absenteeism rates in transit are higher.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of our, I'm just thinking to the chair, our policing is a very difficult and challenging job, and I can tell you that it's not even close to those numbers. So I'm having trouble reconciling that high number, but I'd actually be interested in, there's the national body that looks at transit, and I'm pretty sure that they have data in regards to, you know, the best practices in respect to absenteeism across the transit network on the national, on the national scale. I accept the fact that you're suggesting that the best practice is currently is between ten and twelve percent.
Through the chair, I wouldn't categorize it as best practice. I would say that that's the current rate of absenteeism that the organizations are experiencing in the transit industry on our, with our comparators in the GTHA.
Thank you, counselor.
I appreciate it. So we've identified that there's an issue. You've identified, which I appreciate, some of the strategies as you're going forward. We've also identified through my questioning through the chair, the fact we do have a management change, and there may be a culture shift. And, you know, I came from the labor movement, and I can tell you that depending on the management change or the change in approach to things, right or wrong, you're going to have an impact on many of your members or that you represent or you oversee. So I accept there's a transition period. With all the actions you're taking, when could we expect to get back to a reasonable rate of cancellation?
Debbie?
Through the chair, so I don't accept that there's a reasonable rate of cancellations. We should not be canceling any service. That is, that is our goal, that is our mission every day from a management perspective, is that we, we do not want to cancel service, and all our efforts that we do in our day are working towards that goal. So we are hopeful, given the history in allowing and accessing those extra hours through the wind downers and through the excess hours through the Ministry of Labor, that that has shown an ability for us to decrease the impact that we're experiencing right now on the street. It is a short-term strategy. It is not sustainable from the perspective of delivering service. We need to look and make sure that we are addressing how we plan for absenteeism. Eight percent is not the number. It has not been the number since 2005. We are at nineteen currently, averaging roughly around fifteen percent until this current spike, and we need to make sure that we have the complement that allows us to plan our service knowing that absence rate and that we are not impacting our customers on the street.
Thank you, counselor.
My last question is, can you quantify the differential at eight percent versus eighteen percent in dollar terms?
Dollar terms. So through the chair, I don't have that number for you today, but I'm happy to answer that question when we go back and look at the data. Absolutely.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. Counselor Farr?
Thank you. Time to time I take the bus, so I'm sure we'll have questions from my two colleagues to the left and right who take the bus more often than I, so I'll open by saying, Madam Deputy Mayor, you're bang on. There's a full lot of challenges for our drivers. Almost all of them are exceeding expectations in customer service, and almost all of their passengers are friendly. The one thing that I'll always enjoy hearing, and I didn't as a kid when I rode the Big Yellow Rocket a hell of a lot more, in fact, almost every day, even commuting to the mountain for basketball games with Delta Secondary School, is every time there's a stop, you hear "thank you." Sometimes you hear multiple "thank yous," and the driver always responds with the "thank you" and that sort of thing. So, you know, let's focus on that positivity as well today, but I do have a few questions. Some of them were asked by the previous speaker. First and foremost, though, the one thing that's been rattling around my brain, and I'm one who's been receiving all sorts of correspondence and followed the Twitter for the last number of weeks, through you, did you see it coming, Debbie? Any indicators months ago that this was potentially going to be a storm?
Through the chair, that's an excellent question, counselor. So this time last year is when we did our vacation sign up. So we sign operators' vacation a year in advance. The numbers that were produced last year in relation to how many operators we were going to be letting off for vacation this past summer were increased when they ought not to have been. So early on in the summer, we approached the union executive to ask for that exemption at that particular time to mitigate the potential for canceled service. We were unsuccessful at that particular time in negotiations in regards to that. So what we did internally from a staff perspective is, of course, it was all hands on deck, and we rallied the operating staff and to try to make them aware that we needed some more assistance, and they stepped up to the plate, and people who weren't working overtime for us put their hand up and came in and worked for us. So that got us through the summer somewhat. Then with September coming on and the extra service going back out on the street, you know, we were still unsuccessful in getting that, those two levers that we typically go to to minimize cancellations. It was at that point that the decision was made to bring on the additional staff, the fourteen operators. It takes us approximately from the time that we interview an operator until the time that we can get them in the seat driving, up to three months. So we made that decision back in September. And then we continued to try to negotiate with the union executive to try to get those levers back to us, and I'm happy to say that we have them back. So that should, in the short term, start to bring things back to a more manageable level. In regards to the customer experience on the street, we also made sure that if we had to cancel service, that we tried to do that with the most minimal impact to the customers. So not canceling two buses in a row, making sure that we were pulling from the routes that could sustain us taking a bus from that, you know. In that regard, we have limited options because we have to go to the busier routes with the more buses to do that, but we were pulling every option that we had to try to minimize the impact to the customers.
Through you, Chair, and that's, that's good. It's still an impact. You're not denying that, but it's as minimal as you could manage. Through you, Chair.
Thank you.
What were some of the reasons you were receiving from the union initially when you spotted this tsunami of nineteen percent in the summer that they, that they shared with you that made it so they couldn't accept these exemptions?
So through the chair, the request goes to the union executive. They take it back, they deliberate on it, and then they come back and give us their decision. So they weren't prepared to agree at that particular time.
Is it, is it appropriate or inappropriate for me to ask what the reasoning is, though, through you, Chair? Is that fair? If it's a, if it's a question we should ask in camera, I'm not certain, maybe the clerk through you, Chair. I'm asking, some months ago, when our management saw the potential for what we're dealing with here today, they asked for a couple of levers through union, through the union staff. The union said no at the time, so they wouldn't agree to these exemptions. And I'm asking to management, what were their reasoning for not agreeing?
Clerk?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm actually going to leave that a little bit up to Debbie because I don't know what that conversation was, whether it's something that she feels comfortable releasing or not releasing, without knowing the specific.
So we're leaving it up to Debbie whether or not it should be set out in the open forum or in camera. Counselor?
Yeah, and I'm happy to hear that they have since agreed, but at the time, this is what led to this, so I'll leave it up to Debbie.
Through the chair, I will be addressing that in camera.
Okay, that's fine. So just to piggyback, I was going to ask some of the questions that Counselor, the previous speaker had asked, but you got into a little bit of our comparators, and people shoot for ten to twelve percent. Did you say eight to ten percent or ten to twelve percent?
Through the chair, industry right now absenteeism rates in our comparators, ten to twelve percent.
Thank you.
That's what they prepare for, through you. What are their actuals?
Sorry, through the chair, those are their actuals. I could go back and find out what it is that they budget for or plan for. I'm happy to do that if the counselor would like that information.
No, that's, I, I can accept that answer. Through you, Chair, I get Google it too. Through you, I'm just trying to get a handle on the, did I hear you say to the previous speaker that fatigue or situations of working too many hours as a driver that could lead to even greater absenteeism because it's poor, it could lead to poorer health, through you? That differs between the individual?
Through the chair, so our data is telling us that those operators that are consistently year over year, working in excess of those sixty hours or working in excess of a forty-hour week, are coming to work and taking next to no time off. That's what our data is telling us.
Okay, and then this sixty-eight hours through you, Chair, the ministry doesn't have a recommended weekly total for bus drivers?
Through the chair, the legislation contemplates the maximum hours of work, and then the excess hour permit process allows you to apply to the ministry, provided you have the union's concurrence to increase those hours to provide you flexibility to address absenteeism or service.
Okay, sorry for the repetition on that one. Through you, Chair, can you go to slide seven? I'm just wondering what, what the line looks like for October. We don't have it here. I think we, I only see September, and we've been receiving, and I think I speak for most of my colleagues, a great deal of correspondence, particularly in the last couple of weeks. So can you offer any indication on how high the bar would be? I'm on slide seven, actual hours of canceled service.
Just one second, I'm having a little technical.
Oh, sorry, I thought maybe I, my numbers didn't jive with yours.
Oh, I should just use this then, sorry. I'm not on the, yeah, I'm not on the slideshow. One second.
Good for you.
Good. Sorry. So, sorry, Counselor, could you repeat the question?
What can you, I know you had to prepare this, you were going with stats you've accumulated, and maybe you didn't have all the numbers in yet for October, but is it safe to say through you, Chair, that there's a real blip, that we're going in the wrong direction if we were to include October here today?
Through the chair, so this includes to October as of.
I don't see it on the map. On the graph?
On the graph. So if you look to the right hand, oh, I think I have it. So if you look to the right-hand side, September, and that, that tall blue, that is October.
That is October.
That is October.
I only see September there, but now I see, I'm counting the hash marks. Okay, and then I think, through you, Chair, this Denison, slide 12, this Denison Cultural Survey, the Employee Suggestion Program, Job Shadowing and so forth, do we have, as a council, an opportunity to get an update on what that survey is showing today or soon? Through you, Chair?
Through the chair, I'm happy to provide that to you in the future.
You can't do that today? Is that part of our agenda today?
So, maybe if you could, I don't understand the question, sorry.
Well, it's a cultural survey, and, you know, we've already had some questions, I'm sure we'll have more, on is there, is there an issue with culture at HSR that's causing this? I mean, it's a fair question when you've got nineteen percent. I heard Mr. McKinnon on the radio the other day, he received that question. We're going to get those questions if we're not already. So when, do we have an update on that? That Denison, through you, Chair, is that not a cross-departmental type of survey that we do?
So through the chair, the Denison Culture Survey was done specific in Public Works, and, which then led into our People Survey, which was just completed earlier on in, in October. So I believe in regards to the Culture Survey, we had, we've gotten the results back from the Culture Survey. We had some areas of concern, so I don't know if you recall, there was the doughnut and the rings inside the doughnut in regards to how we were doing. So, you know, our participation rate was thirty-four percent. Our results were very inside, in the middle, in regards to engagement and employee involvement. So that did indicate that we have a lot of opportunity there to try to move that, that over to a better position.
Thank you, counselor.
Yeah, you got to start somewhere. Through you, Chair, for sure. But that was when, through you, Chair, the last time we saw the doughnut?
So we completed the Denison Survey was just in 2017, at the beginning, so it was last fall, and then we got the results in January, and then we went from that into our work planning sessions as we took out the information that the employees told us. And it was through that work planning strategies that we came up with the, through the employees, the Employee Suggestion Program and the Job Shadowing Program. But I want to stress on that particular, that was our second Denison Survey that we had completed in Public Works and at Transit. And before this last, so that first time that we did that survey, you know, we did not go back to the employees and do the work planning workshops and engage them in what they told us. So the second time, we went out again and we asked them, they told us, and it was this time that we actually followed through on the steps of the Denison model, which was verifying the results, bringing the people in, doing the work planning workshops, coming up with initiatives to try to move towards the right direction as far as our culture work.
Thank you, counselor.
Just so, real quick, through you, Chair, that's all completed now, then?
Through the chair.
No one they require on Denison's?
On Denison, well, we've now gone into the Our People Survey, so we've done our work, and we're continuing to do that work, which is now going to roll into our People Survey.
Thank you, counselor.
And again, back full circle almost, through you, Deputy Mayor, comparators, anybody else, Toronto, London, Waterloo, anybody else even close to nineteen percent right now as we speak?
Through the chair, through my, reach out to my coworkers across GTHA, no one's even close to nineteen percent.
Yeah.
Thank you, counselor.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go to Counselor Collins, I'd like to introduce to you one of Benbrook's finest athletes, Aiden Ferguson, who's here with Dad today. Counselor Collins.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. And Debbie, thanks for the summary. I think you've given a fairly good summary in terms of the investments that we've made and some of the challenges that we face. And so as I've tried to piece this together over the last week or so, since we've started to receive calls for disruption in service, you know, you look at, we're not in a period of negotiations, and that can sometimes lead to some of the disruptions that we've seen. We're not implementing a new collective agreement. The one we're working with right now is fairly cut and dried, and we've been working with it for some time. This area of the organization, in contrast to many others, has received additional staff when other areas of the organization we've seen significant cuts. And of course, we've invested in the area, so I would, you know, struggle to accept that it's something related to a lack of resources. So that leads us to some of the culture issues that I think Counselor Whitehead and Farr alluded to earlier. And I wonder, in the context of what you've provided to us, what our grievances are like right now, and how's that trending? If we were to see a chart similar to the absenteeism one that you have here, would we see similar spikes for grievances, or are they relatively flatlined at this point in time? Through you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Debbie.
Through the chair, we are seeing a significant increase in the number of grievances.
Thank you, counselor.
And do we have numbers related to the same?
Through the chair, I don't have those with me today, but I'm happy to get those to you.
Thank you, counselor.
Are we in the process of doing something internally that would, and I have to be frank, I mean, I have had a number of, since the media attention last week, I've had a number of my constituents who work for the HSR call me to give me their input and their, and their opinion related to going to work every day, and many of them share that it's not a positive environment that they're working in, that morale is very low, and that's why I asked the grievance question. And so I'm just wondering what internal changes we may have made, understanding the collective agreement's fairly black and white. What changes may, might we have made internally that would cause people to choose to stay home rather than go to work because they may not be satisfied with what's going on at the office, or if they're not in one of the buildings, they're on the bus? What's changed over the last couple of months? And would it correlate to the absenteeism spikes that we've seen if there have been changes? Through you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Debbie. Again, if you choose to do this in camera.
So through the chair, I'm going. So, through the chair, I'm going to address that--
I'm sorry, just sorry to interrupt. Yes, right after this presentation, we are going in camera, and Debbie's going to choose whether or not to answer the questions, or whether they need to be answered in camera.
Thank you for that.
Through the chair, I, you know, I do have something prepared for in camera, but what I, I do want to say, what has fundamentally changed since my arrival at HSR is that we are holding people accountable. So--
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And so, if I'm to look at the chart, and if I go to your chart, let's use the chart seven, there, the absenteeism certainly over a period of time, there are spikes, but certainly not as pronounced as the ones that we have now. Is it something in the collective agreement, and I hear your accountability answer, and we can certainly deal with that in camera if you'd like to elaborate, but is, were there changes made to the collective agreement that would have led to this here, or is it the implementation of the collective agreement that would be part of the answer to explain why, you know, we see, we see the bumps in the roads over time, but certainly a lot has changed in the last year or so?
So, through the chair, so this particular slide is showing our actual cancelled service. What I want to draw your attention to is this particular slide, and that previous slide would have looked like this earlier--
Correct.
--in 2015. So--
But if we take the black line and I look at everything to the left of it--
Oh.
--that would be something--
Okay, sorry.
--we may be accustomed to seeing over the years, and that side, even with the mitigation factors--
Yes.
--is something we're not accustomed to seeing. Through you, Madam Chairman.
So, through, through the chair, everything left of the black line, we have not done that same analysis forward because that information, that data, was not compiled or collected. So that was the actual number of hours of service cancelled--
Yep.
--but we weren't recording the correlation like we are able to now going forward from 2015 to be able to get those red bars.
Right, and I think that's why I asked to use seven. So if we go to seven--
Oh, sorry. Okay.
And that's the actual hours with mitigating factors in place. Are those apples-to-apple comparisons there with, right across the board from 2010 to 2017?
Thank you, Debbie.
Through the chair, just give me one moment. Can I ask you to repeat the question, Councillor Collins?
Yeah, so if, in the actual hours of cancelled service, I'm assuming the two 10 numbers then are an apples-to-apples comparison of the 217 chart that you have here. So these would be taking into account all mitigating factors where you've tried to call people into work, to replace those that are either part of the plan or unplanned, absenteeism, those would be the numbers related to service we just can't get on the road because we haven't had the ability to, through normal process, get someone in the bus and have them on the road.
Debbie?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Thank you.
Those are my questions. Right now, I probably have a number of them in camera as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I don't have a long list of questions because many of them have been asked. I do, do, you know, want to state that, you know, no matter what the cause, a 20% absentee rate is just totally, completely unacceptable. You know, I concern myself for drivers for sure, and, you know, a nice story this morning about the kind of issues they deal with on a day-to-day basis, I think that's, that's certainly important for us to bear in mind. But the reality is that we're leaving far too many people on the street, and they rely on this service. This is not a luxury for them, this is a necessity. So I know you know that, and I know I'm anxious to hear what you have to say in camera. But to all concern, I mean, operators and management, this is not an acceptable scenario that we can either sustain or condone or allow to have continue, and it needs emergent and quick measures to result. So I'm glad to see you're putting some recommendations for it. Nice to see that the union is, the ATU is providing some assistance, but I think more will be required if we're going to get a handle on this totally. So I, I'm anxious to hear what you have to say in camera. I think that'll be, those will be important messages. But, so the two, the two measures, the short-term, this is my question, the two short-term measures you put in place, I mean, they're short-term, they're expected to, at the very least, get us back to hopefully no cancellations or minimal cancellation?
Debbie?
Through the chair, to minimal cancellations, it is not going to get us to no cancellations.
Okay, and is there ever a point where we can get to that point?
Through the chair--
I mean, is that, is that a state of operations that we've ever had in our existence as an HSR transit system?
Through the chair, that we've never cancelled any service.
Well, I mean, the minimal.
The minimal amount of service. There potentially always is a situation that we may need to cancel service, it's the nature of the business. So can we get to zero? Is that reasonable? Absolutely. It's hard to predict that because it's the day of absences that drive that, so.
Okay, so that's good. But one of the ironies, you know, and I understand the questions around council, is that we made some strategic investments in transit, buses, lines and operators to have an impact on reliability and predictability of the system. So if our transit system isn't that, then, you know, the value of it is diminished significantly. So ought not zero be the goal. I mean, not, I mean, in my mind, you know, if I think of other transit systems, and I'm thinking European transit systems, there is, there is war if the train doesn't come on to the minute that it's supposed to be there. You know, if you think about any European country, I mean, they're, they are, they are reliable, they don't have cancelled service unless there's something happening on the track or something happening on the road that causes them to reroute. So is our, is our goal to have a zero cancellation process that would allow the transit to continue no matter what, but that we have mitigating factors in place to actually make that happen?
Through the chair, absolutely. It is zero.
Thank you. And in long term, you know, what is the longer-term solution? I mean, and I know that there are, and there may, these may be some in-camera issues, I appreciate that, but, you know, just given where we are today, short-term solutions are fine, we need to get the service back up and running as it should be without any cancellations or minimal. What is the longer-term kind of approach that you're, you're going to start working towards to help create that long-term solution that gets us out of this kind of scenario from time to time?
Thank you, Debbie.
So, through the chair, as I mentioned earlier, we restructured in, later on in the summer, I've got the right players now at the management level. We're currently sifting through all of our data, looking at, you know, every process that we have, how we plan our service, how we workforce manage, what those numbers are, what the data is telling us, and then putting in some robust processes around that to ensure that as we move forward, that we are limber enough to be able to make those adjustments so that, so that our goal of zero cancellations is attainable and sustainable.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I look forward to the in-camera portion, I think that will be enlightening as well. But I'm, I'm happy to see that this is getting the attention it requires, and it's probably something that's going to require attention for quite some time to come. But the bottom line is, this is a service to our residents in our community that many taxpayers in our community pay a lot of money to actually support and promote, even though some of them may not use it. And it needs to be totally and completely predictable and reliable. So if that continues to be the goal, I'm delighted to hear that. And I would expect that our operators are of the same mind. And maybe that's something that we need to have some discussion around because that's an important issue. We cannot deliver this service without the full support and commitment of the operators that are, that are on the buses each and every day. And we appreciate that, but it needs their, it needs their full commitment as well. So if we can have those two issues happening, then I think we can find some great resolve here to get this thing moving in the right direction. Thank you, Debbie, for all your great work, and I look forward to the in-camera.
Thank you. Councillor Marilla?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Debbie, just out of curiosity, you have the actual graph here with respect to the actual hours of cancelled service. Would I like to have is a comparative graph based on pre-September, pre-September, when you started, when did you start exactly?
Through the chair, September of 2016, late September.
Okay. If we could have overtime numbers, comparatively speaking, pre-September 16 and post-September 16, I'd like to see the trend on a comparative basis with respect to this entire period of time. Is that possible to develop?
Through the chair, absolutely. We have that data, and we'll prepare that for you, councillor.
Okay, because I think clearly if we have that data, we can see, I think, a great deal of perhaps insight on what could potentially be motivating this, and I look forward to that. How quickly do you think we can have that?
Debbie?
Through the chair, as General Manager McKinnon mentioned earlier, we have been working nonstop on drilling through the data. I believe we have a good portion of that now, I'm just looking to staff, but the data's there, it's just the horsepower around compiling that, so we'll make that a priority for you, councillor.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Aidan Johnson?
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. And through you, Debbie, I think you have a very hard job. And I'm grateful for the information you've brought to us today and for the initiative you've shown in trying to help us to deal with the serious problem that we're talking about today. Could you please go back to slide number nine in your show? I just want to understand the mitigating strategies a bit better. So what does an attendance manager do? An attendance management role is to be reinstated. What is that, and why is that valuable?
So, through the chair, so there would be, there's a number of functions around that. It's the day-to-day management of the attendance, but more importantly, it's typical of the work that myself and my team have been going through all weekend, is analyzing the data, looking for trends, looking at historical information as to, you know, when are we experiencing absenteeism, to put the mitigating factors in well in advance so that we don't find ourselves in the position that we are today.
And that function was eliminated at some point?
Through the chair, yes, that was back in April of 2015.
And why was it eliminated? Just simply as a savings, it was seen as not giving value? Why the elimination?
So, through the chair, I'm going to be addressing that in camera.
Okay. Also, on that list of points, you list as a mitigating strategy, policy development for transit-specific complement control. What is that, please?
So, through the chair, typically when you're talking about complement control, your number is your number, and going in excess of that number is not part of the control measures. In transit, we need to develop a policy to be more flexible around what that number is, to be able to identify when we need to bring more complement on in order not to have to rely on overtime to put the service on the street.
And here, complement refers to both drivers and buses? What is--
Through the chair, it's just people.
People.
Thank you. Councillor?
So, I'm still, I'm still trying to figure out exactly what's involved in that. So, policy development for transit-specific complement control, meaning how to get more human beings, it's simply another way of stating figuring out policies to get more people to show up to work? Is that what that line is?
So, through the chair, it's to have a rigorous, a rigorous process by which that we have defined steps to take to ensure that we, that this situation just doesn't creep up on us, I guess in a nutshell.
Advanced planning.
Sorry?
Sorry, you mean advanced planning?
Through the chair, absolutely, advanced planning, analyzing the data, looking where the trends are, and ensuring that there is a process for review so that despite people's best efforts or not best efforts, that this does not go unchecked.
Thank you, councillor.
I think I understand. So, next line in your list, reviewing opportunities in the way we schedule the workforce. Scheduling methods, scheduling principles, what does that refer to?
So, through the chair, so we, just to simplify, just to understand, so we have a number of hours that we put out there in service, and then we have to translate those hours into a schedule. So within our planning department, their function then is to, and the term is run-cut, but to come up with the actual schedules that the operators are doing to deliver the service that we planned on the street. So typically, in the past, operations puts the operators in the seat, planning tells us what the schedules are. And there's always been, at least in my 30 years' experience, a disconnect between the continuity between those two functions, i.e., it looks good on paper, but when it hits the street, it doesn't make sense and it's not making the needs. So one of the decisions that I made when we restructured the HSR was specific to the individual that I recruited into the position of planning and infrastructure. And Jason Vanderheide is the manager of that, and what he brings to that role is a combination of those two unique requirements to do the best job at looking at the numbers, looking at what we want to plan for the service, and operationally, what is the impact. And it's that operational background that he has, he started as an operator at HSR, that he is able to identify opportunities to do it either more efficiently, to get the most value for our dollar in regards to how we're putting the service out there. So currently, or what has been the historical practice, there were no parameters around that. So, you know, easy way to run, to develop schedules is just to put it in the computer, spit it out, and there it goes with no consideration to overtime, functionality, you know, efficiencies, you know, the proper way to do it, put it in the computer, start with that, and then start going through it to identify efficiencies and where we can make, take, make the most advantages in regards to the schedule. As well, coupled with that, is to impact with the workforces that you need to put the schedules out. So if I have eight hours of work and I schedule it out in two-hour pieces, I need four bodies. But if I have eight hours of work and I schedule it out, I potentially could only need one or two bodies.
Councillor?
So those, those sound like good, practical tweaks. So that's, that is promising. Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, Debbie, do you have information, anecdotal or otherwise, about the extent to which mental health is the reason for some of our absenteeism?
So, through the chair, we have seen an increase in our mental, mental health incidents. We've done a lot of work around that with staff up at HSR, and typically when you bring some awareness to a situation, there is an increase to that. But I can get some information from our counterparts in human resources in specific numbers, if you like.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, Madam Deputy Mayor, at our council meeting last Wednesday night, we accepted a report, a good report with some promising information in it, through AFA, regarding the city's mental health strategy. I'm wondering, is HSR directly a part of that initiative through HR? How does that all sync together?
Through the chair, we are a part of every initiative that the city provides, so I'm not, I'm going to say yes.
Got it. So that does make sense. At the AFA meeting where we heard about the mental health strategy, there was a promising indication that mindfulness training is coming to some corners of the organization. I wonder if mindfulness training might be a good thing for our employees, given how hard their job is in terms of dealing with challenging customers throughout the day?
Through the chair, I am open to any tools or anything that we have available to support our operators and give them what they need to be able to do their job and to come to work and feel safe in what they're doing and to be looked after, absolutely.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, thanks. Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Debbie. Debbie, what are the qualities that we look for in a new hire, when we're hiring a new driver?
So, through the chair, so we do have a rigorous recruiting program, and it's based on other industry. We reached out to Canadian Urban Transit Association, they developed a program called STRATA that we taken, because there are unique qualities that we look for in an operator. And they're essentially two distinct core functions that we need. We need somebody who is able to drive a vehicle and drive it safely, and we need somebody who is able to give excellent customer service. And sometimes those two qualities are in individuals separately and not combined. We do have a lot of operators that come to us with both those specific skill sets. So what we do and we focus our training on is ensuring that we're giving them the training for the safe operation as well as providing them customer service skills. So we do some testing in order to make sure there's a good fit in regards to that. We also do a lot of awareness training about the actual requirements of the job. So, you know, this is not an 8:30 to 4:30, Monday to Friday job where you're sitting, you know, comfortably in a climate-controlled room with access to facilities and access-- you know, comfortably in a climate-controlled room with access to facilities and access potentially for flexible hours and access to washroom and a break for lunch. So we, you know, we, we give them the straight facts so that they know what the expectations are and what that job is going to entail. So we try to include all that as well when we are looking at, you know, bringing people on at the HSR.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. That's an excellent answer. And Madam Deputy Mayor, I suppose what I'm wrestling with is basically this. On the one hand, we have a responsibility to police our employees and, you know, discipline employees where there's evidence of a pattern of bad work or neglect on their part, but we also have a deep obligation as an organization to ensure we're providing our employees with all the resources we need to, to make sure they do a good job. We have, we have both obligations, and our obligations are steeper than our employees' obligations precisely because we're the city of Hamilton. So I think that through these sorts of conversations, we're getting at identifying our obligations a bit more clearly. My final question is an important mental health subset question. It's about going to the bathroom. And Debbie and I have had these questions, have had, we've been having this conversation throughout the year. Suffice to say, we know that it's a challenge for our employees in HSR to find a bathroom sometimes. So what is the existing rule around going to the bathroom? Please tell us about going to the bathroom and our rules, these, the HSR drivers?
Thank you, Debbie.
So through the chair, we have facilities throughout the city that are specific or at the end of the line for washroom facilities. We have locations throughout the city that we have agreements with that they allow our operators to have access to the facilities. So the rule, and I don't know if I would describe it as a rule, but if you have to go to the washroom, stop your bus, park it in a safe spot and access a washroom.
Thank you.
Out of curiosity, what are the facilities with which we have agreements?
There's a number of them across the city. So there are gas stations, donut shops, you know, we look at strategic locations along the line. So, you know, it's great to think that everybody needs to use the facility at one end and the other end. It's the in-between locations that, you know, may be problematic. So that's, we're constantly looking for additional locations along the route where they can access a washroom.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. And I have further questions that I'll take up in camera. I appreciate the opportunity.
Yep, thank you. And our last speaker is Councillor Green. And just a reminder of anybody who's within listening distance, we are not in quorum. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. Through you, Debbie, is your department currently operating on budget?
Debbie?
Through the chair, no, we're not.
So are you surplus or are you running a deficit?
So through the chair, we are predicting an unfavorable variance at the end of 2017.
Thank you, councillor.
So given the enhancements and given the fact that there's this much absenteeism, you're still predicting that you're going to be running a deficit at the end of the year?
Debbie?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Can you explain that?
So through the chair, our number-one expense at transit is employee-related costs. And currently, what is driving that number is our increase in overtime expenditures.
Thank you, councillor.
And so I hear about our enhancements, and we heard about buses, lines, and operators. And it's very clear on the quick math on slide 11, 37 new operators hired in 2017, 14 that will be brought on by the end of the year, so that gives us 23, and yet 22 have left to date. Quick maths tell me we're only running with one extra driver on these enhanced routes. Can you explain that?
Debbie?
So through the chair, these numbers on slide, am I at the right slide? Was it 11 or 14? Sorry.
This is right. No, you're right.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
37 new operators hired, 14, I'm hearing, were just hired in September.
Okay.
Won't start until December. So if you take the 14 and minus, or you take the 37 and minus the 14, that has us at 23 drivers to date. 22 have already left.
Okay.
So that puts us currently with one extra driver a year to date. Is that correct?
So through the chair, this slide is specific around attrition and people who are retiring. So what is driving our shortage of operators right now is the absenteeism rate and our ability to absorb that number. So, so we plan our schedules, we decide we need this many drivers to put the service on the street. Within that schedule, we then say, what is our absence rate going to be, or what we budget for our absence rate, which is currently at 8%. 8% represents this many additional drivers that we need available to put...
Excuse me. Through the chair, please.
Through the chair, Madam Deputy Mayor, I understand that. I'm just going back to the simplified math. Based on the numbers you've presented in slide 11, I appreciate the process. I'm just talking about what you've presented here. 37 new operators hired. When was the decision made to hire the 14 new operators?
Early part of September.
Thank you, councillor.
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, you operated for nine months with a, with a one, based on your attrition, with a one-driver surplus. So that would, that would tell me if the decision was made in September that it wasn't budgeted for in the previous year of the budget block. Otherwise, you would have hired back in January.
Thank you, Debbie.
So through the chair, I'm going to ask Nancy Purser, who is our support services manager, who is intimately...
Sure. So Nancy's coming up to speak. Debbie, you've been standing for over an hour. Would you like a chair?
I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just holler if you need.
Compassion for our employees.
Yeah, an hour later. Okay, we've got Dan McKinnon, who would like to respond?
Sorry, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So I think the thing to appreciate about transit is every month, those numbers are changing. Every month, you have people either leaving the organization because of promotion or opportunities elsewhere, retiring, so the recruitments that happen, they are dictated based on what we see happening on a monthly basis. And if I understood, maybe I understood the question a little differently. We did not add any new service in 2017. So basically, we're in a kind of maintained mode throughout 2017 and just replacing operators that we're losing. I don't know if that helps.
Councillor?
It does help. It explains that, that we're, what at least identifies to me is a practice that is commonly known as gapping, that we're in a situation where you have a department that's running a deficit. These absentees, I mean, you're probably saving money even with the overtime because we're not, we're not having service on the road. We're cutting service. So when you cut service in an austerity budget, you are saving money. And so the challenge that I have is that blaming the drivers who clearly aren't even there. We've only accounted for one extra driver based on this model that's been presented here, and you're already running a deficit. It would make more sense for me, Madam Deputy Mayor, if it was reported that you guys are, you know, going to come in with cost savings because you budgeted and planned appropriately and the missed service has resulted in cost savings at the end of the year, but that's not what I'm hearing.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, if I may respond to that. So I think we are going to be covering some of this when we go into camera, and I think that's when we'll be talking about some of the history here. But I can't tell you just quickly that we are currently over complement. We have more heads than we actually have complement for right now. We've, and we've got some analysis of that we're going to show you.
Thank you, councillor.
So you have here the background improved to operate experience. They talk about running time and recovery time, and we touched on that here. I can tell you as somebody who takes the bus every day, if a bus driver stops to go to the bathroom, there is hell to pay when they walk back on that bus. It is undignified, and it is unfortunate, and it's misplaced. People feel like it's their fault, that they're lazy. Can you just explain how the headtimes work and how that, the amount of pressure that they're under when we are actually doing these turnarounds?
Debbie?
So through the chair, depending on what the service is like and the traffic conditions and the timing around that, and if they're carrying a double headway, there is a significant amount of pressure around maintaining a schedule. We, you know, we publish a schedule, we want to operate to a schedule. So any time that that schedule is impacted to put the operator behind schedule, you know, taking that extra five minutes to stop the bus to go and use a facility when you have to go is problematic. It's problematic for the operator, and it's problematic for our customers. So at, but at the end of the day, these folks have to use the washroom.
Yes. And how are the run boards determined? Who is responsible for planning the operations?
So through the chair, that would be us who develop the schedules. But in the past, we have worked with frontline staff, and have we done the best job at listening to what they're telling us? Potentially not. But going forward, we are committed to working with the frontline staff to ensure that what they are telling us is working and not working, that we're looking at it, that we're looking at the data, and we're making those corrections.
Thank you, councillor.
Respectfully, I would submit that in what you've presented in terms of your short and midterm mitigation strategies are actually at odds with what I'm hearing from the manager of Public Works. He's suggesting that we have an over complement. You're suggesting that one of your short-term strategies is new operators. Can you explain that discrepancy?
So through the chair, the new operators is able to allow us the flexibility to not have to rely on drivers working overtime to put the service on the street. So right now, if I want, if I have a piece of work that's open, I have to rely on an operator doing extra work for them to come in and so I'm not canceling the service. By bringing in more operators that are available, I am not relying on the overtime. I can effectively plan in advance to fill that work so I'm not canceling service.
Thank you, councillor.
When you have mitigation strategies through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, on slide four, it talks about the application to the Ministry of Labor, and I had heard that floated earlier roughly around the same time you had suggested. With the bump up potentially of 68 hours of work, I can tell you as a passenger, I'm not wholly comfortable in bus drivers working 70 hours in a week. How much of that would be overtime? So they would have overtime allocated to that on top of their 40 hours?
So through the chair, that's correct. So we have two types of overtime. There is some overtime built into their schedules. So depending on, you know, what their work week is, anything over and above, if it's 40 hours, 45 hours, up until that time is that overtime rates.
So had they agreed... Had they had agreed to this back in July, you'd be, as a department, in even further deficit?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Substantially.
Through the chair, approximately $280,000 more.
Thank you, councillor.
And based on the 10-year transit strategy, we talked about enhancements, we raised the rates, what was the, what was the departmental rate levy increase last year?
I think it was...
What was the increase the city put in? Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and Mr. Zagarik or Dan?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, it was around 1.6%.
What's inflation?
Excuse me. Can you say that again? I didn't hear.
1.6.
1.6, thank you.
And inflation is roughly 2.2? Being generous?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, don't have that number in front of us, but you're probably close.
So we knew going into this budget, even with attrition and the cost of wages going up, that we were running at a deficit. We understood that a big majority, at least, and I'm still, I can't reconcile the differences because I'm more with you, that more drivers would relieve this pressure in a substantial way. I'm of the mind that had we not deferred the 10-year transit strategy, we could have potentially avoided this in a lot of different ways. And so if we could talk about how hours are selected specifically and how the seniority works in terms of determining, determining who gets what hours off?
Through the chair, could you just give me a little bit more? So you're looking for...
Vacations and such when you're at the beginning and, like, who determines when somebody can go off on holidays, when they can go and see their great aunt?
Yes.
When they can, you know, who determines that?
So through the chair, that's our planning department. So we look at exactly what the entitlement is on the collective agreement for all the operators. We establish quotas based within our existing workforce numbers so that we are not putting more people out on vacation than we can backfill their positions when they're not here. Does that answer your question?
It does, yes. And so in a situation where if I have more seniority, I have the first picks. If I'm a new driver, I don't get to pick when I have my holidays, and I probably don't get to pick with seniority what lines I'm on. Is that correct?
So through the chair, I'll answer that in two parts. As far as the vacation selection is concerned, we have three selections, in A, B, and C. Everybody, all the operators are put into their group, and then we sign one-year A, B, C, BCA. And within those selections, then you get to choose out of what's on the board for the work that you want for vacation. So if, based on your seniority, if the week you want off is still there when it's your turn to sign your vacation, then you take those vacations. And then the second part of your question was...
With the actual lines that people are on, like, how are those selected?
So through the chair, again, we post all the work that's available based on the planning department. And again, that's through a signup selection through seniority, that when it's your turn to sign, you go look at the board, you pick your two days off, and then you go through the board and decide what, on your working days, where you want to work based on your seniority and what's available at the time you sign.
Councillor?
It's safe to assume new drivers have the least ability to select what days they're off and the least, which is often the case with seniority. I don't, but given that, if you can break down those categories, how would they be in terms of the complement of your operating workforce? So would you suggest that 20% have A seniority, 45 have B, and, you know, the remaining are kind of newbies? Like, what is the HR complement of your operators?
Debbie?
Through the chair, I can get that information for you, councillor, as to, you know, in, you know, how many have five years on the job, 10, 15, 20? Absolutely, I can get that information for you.
Because I should say, Madam Deputy Mayor, much like Councillor Collins, I also receive daily anecdotal feedback from folks, particularly new drivers who feel like they're under a tremendous amount of pressure, who feel like they don't have, you know, the discretion to be able to adequately meet the needs of their family as it relates to time off, and we're seeing the gapping, and we're seeing absenteeism kind of creating a cycle of absenteeism. Is it, is it ever the case that people, or I should say, how often is it the case that people are denied their requested vacation days and time off?
So through the chair, so aside from a block of a one-week vacation, we also allow at any given time five people off on a single vacation day, Monday to Friday, and I believe the number goes up by one on the weekends. So again, that's a first-come, first-served basis, that if you have a single vacation day that you've elected through your signup, that you can pick those days. But we also do have, you know, some flexibility around how we can maneuver around to address those concerns because absolutely people have lives, they have commitments, they want the time off to do things. And if we just strictly look at it from, you know, what the quota is and not being able to afford that flexibility, so we do have a switch and trade, which allows them to change their work so that they can get the time off. As I mentioned, we implemented the shift giveaway program, which allows them to give their shift away so that they can get that time off. And, and, you know, and clearly, they have personal emergency leave days that they can access through ESA. And finally, you know, and then there's the consideration and the compassion that we can exercise as management in those situations that are dire, that, you know, at the end of the day, we want to give that employee that time off because it's a serious matter.
Thank you, councillor.
Two more comments I just wanted to address. One was to talk about your management culture is holding drivers accountable. What does discipline look like typically on the range of grievances that might come up? What happens are, is there suspensions? Are they docked pay? How is that used?
Processed up.
So through the chair, you know, discipline is measured and progressive. So depending on the severity of the incident, if it's a minor incident, you know, counseling, verbal warning, written warning, potential suspension and going through the chain, depending on the severity of the incident, you know, you might potentially, you know, jump to termination and/or somewhere in within that scale, but it should be measured in relation to the severity of the incident.
Thank you, councillor.
How many drivers have been terminated in the last year?
Through the chair, I don't have that number for you today. I can get it for you.
Pure to guess.
So since 17, I believe, two?
Okay. That's fine. Madam Deputy Mayor, the reason why I asked is because I'm looking, the running number, the simple maths, the quick maths I'm doing in my head, and just in terms of the complement, the plus and, you know...
Yes.
Plus, minus of who's online there. Because you did make the comment about the culture, and I do believe that to be the case. And it could also be the case, the correlation of an increased severity and discipline could result in some cases of increased absenteeism and poor morale. So I'm very interested in getting that Dennison survey out, and I don't know if it doesn't name anybody specifically or if it doesn't have any identifiable people to make it public so that the public can have a full understanding of what the operators are saying, because they're certainly not here today. My last question is a very interesting comment you made. You stated that you are at a saturation point based on the workforce we have, which is a very interesting statement. In your opinion, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, do you believe that if we had supported the 10-year actions, the 10-year transit strategy and actually funded from the levy side, the 37 workers' front end versus after... side, the 37 workers' front end versus after the crisis, because we could have projected this quite some time ago, could we have avoided this?
So...
Krista Wald, Deb.
So through the chair, so the third year of the strategy that we didn't put in place in 2017 was directly related to our inability to bring the capital on, so we don't, we wouldn't have had the buses. So we don't have the buses in '17 to put those additional hours out. So...
If I could just quickly on that point, we're having an issue with absenteeism.
Yes.
So those drivers, and then more, like, so you're not having people asking them to work 68 hours. You're having drivers work regular hours and having regular pressures on your drivers versus this compounded pressure. It's a very simple question. Could have had, could have hiring 37 people at the beginning of the year, adequately funded by the levy, have at least mitigated some of the absenteeism. I'm not asking for an absolute.
Through the chair, yes, it would have.
So these are the challenges that I have, Madam Deputy Mayor, is that I've heard the onus being put on drivers. I've heard, Madam Deputy Mayor, a report that clearly identifies a little bit of a contradiction, quite frankly, between management and the director in terms of how many people are appropriate for this department. And I'm wondering out loud how much of this is a basic budget pressure of putting an austerity budget on a department that we're trying to grow, at least publicly, forwardly, we're saying to the public, we want to grow it. And again, I'm very curious to see what the culture says, because there is causation and correlation.
Yes.
And the causation I'm hearing today is different than what I'm hearing in the community. And I'm certainly interested in having that conversation publicly, because I don't, if it's not identifying anybody, and the general public is the ridership, and the ridership is the general public, and the, and the operators are also our public, it's a conversation we should have in an open and honest way. So I look forward to that, and I look forward to hearing additional thoughts in camera as I do look forward to hearing from the union, because I, I heard it differently as it related to the, the additional hours, in terms of their willingness to do it. And I'm now hearing with a deficit, they probably did you a bit of a favor in terms of the pressure that you have and the gapping that's occurring on the hours. So those are my points, and I look forward to hearing others. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have Counselor Vanderbeek, as the last of the first-time speakers. Please remind everybody, we are going in camera as soon as we're finished asking questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So through you, to Deb, are people having their regular or previously scheduled vacation canceled now, given this situation?
Through the chair, we have not canceled anybody's pre-booked vacation.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. 68 hours is too long for somebody to be taking public safety in their hands, and too long to expect people to work on any kind of a regular basis. And so I guess my question to you is, what could fix this? In your opinion, what would fix this?
So through the chair, is, from a customer's perspective and a cancellation-on-the-street perspective, it's additional complement, additional drivers.
Thank you, Counselor.
So through you, Madam Chair, more money.
Through the chair, not necessarily, no, because right now, we rely on overtime at a premium of time and a half to fill work out on the street. So if I have more drivers, I'm putting that service out at straight time.
Counselor?
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, so you're saying that you need permission to hire more drivers?
Through the chair...
Is that what you're saying? Is that what I'm hearing?
Through the chair, if I had more staff available to put the service out on the street, I could put it out at straight time and not cancel on the road.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. So I have a question about, about the organization of a driver and a route for the day. So a driver gets in the bus, and they drive their route, and then they have a break? Is that right, at the end of the route? And then they get in their bus, and they ride back? Is that generally what they're doing?
So through the chair, generally, at the end of the line, we have recovery time. So if they haven't used that, so let's just say they have 30 minutes to get to the end of the line, we give them 10 minutes of recovery, and then they leave after that to go the other direction. If they get to the end of the line within that 30 minutes, so the traffic, you know, everything was perfect, they got to the end of the line, then they would have that 10 minutes to have a break and then go the other way. But on the, on the reverse, if they don't get to the end of the line at the 30 minutes, and they get there at 38 minutes, then they get the two minutes. The purpose of the recovery time is so that when they start on their next trip the other way, they're leaving on time. And that's a measure that we built into the schedule so that we can be reliable in our service that we're providing. Does that make sense?
Counselor?
Thank you. So through you, Madam Chair, yes, that makes sense. What doesn't make sense to me is that there, there doesn't seem to be anything built in for anyone to stop and go to the washroom, for instance. And so, you know, when people work in an office, they're given, you know, two 20-minute breaks or 15-minute breaks, and they're given a lunch hour. And, and I'm not, I'm not saying that it's exactly the same, it's different. I get that. It's different. But, but, so I have to say that, that I've had many phone calls in the last few days over a bright blue Johnny on the spot that sits at the very entrance to Dundas from highway, from Governor's Road, coming in from, from Lancaster. And I can tell you that no one's pleased about it. It really, it really is like a pea on an elephant. It sticks out like a sore thumb. To me, there has to be a better resolution than in a, in a residential area, parking a Johnny on the spot on the, beside the sidewalk. So I'll take that conversation offline, but my point is that, that you've put five routes, you've done something at the end of the, of the route. But these people have no opportunity to stop without inciting their, their customers, our customers, about, because they need to use a facility somewhere along the way. And, and I see that as extremely problematic for anybody who's in a job, who gets on a bus and then has to suffer some kind of abuse because they need to use some kind of public facility for a minute. And so part of that to me is, is, is us taking some responsibility for the perception of the people who ride on the bus. They need to know that the bus driver's going to stop at some point on his route or her route to use a facility. And, and so I see it as a much bigger problem than just, just canceling routes. People rely on those routes, absolutely, and they need to be able to rely on them. And we all know that, and I think we're all on the same page there. And we'd all really like it if this would work. But, but when I was in Europe, I had the opportunity to sit beside, sorry, I had an opportunity to sit beside someone who was an employee on a transit line. And, and, you know, we were just chatting, and he was saying that he, he basically works separate routes. He routes two routes. So partway through his route, he gets off and somebody gets on. And he can go to the washroom, and he can have a sandwich. And then he gets on another bus, and he does another route, or he gets back on the same one, depending on how often they crisscross. And we know that in some places and in some transit systems, they crisscross more often than ours do. But, but as we're looking at going forward with the, the transit system in this city, I really believe that we need to be looking at more than just, just how to get our customers where they want to go, but how to look after our staff. And we've asked the province to let us run the LRT. And so all of a sudden, we can't run the HSR. And, and I don't mean to be negative, but it's just the fact that right now, we have to find a way to fix this immediately. Whatever that takes, we have to find a way to fix this immediately, not just for our customers, for our staff, so they can serve, so they're not working 68 hours, so they're not having to, to be worried about stopping the bus to go use the facilities, or, or pick up a coffee, or a bottle of water, or whatever they do, for their life and for their sustainability in that seat. And, and I don't have the answer for that, but I am, I'm trying to have the confidence that out of this will come some good, and the good that will come out of it will be a much improved experience, not just for our customers, but for our staff and for ourselves, so that we know that we have something that's reliable and that we've made the difference. And so I am looking forward to the in-camera session to find out more about why this has happened and how you really plan to fix it.
I like...
So I'll stop there. Most of my other customers, my other questions were already answered, but I just wanted to say that Johnny on the spots at the end of a, of a line are not going to fix this. And, and us talking about it forever isn't going to fix it. We need to take action, and we need to do that quick. And I'm on board to help through that.
Thank you. And just a reminder, everyone, our senior staff have to be at a QP event today. It's very important. So second-time speakers, if we can keep this short and sweet, we need to go in camera. Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you for clarification. Couple of questions unanswered, and I was a bit disappointed. We can always throw money at it and hire more drivers. I guess my concern is 18% absenteeism approaching 20% is not acceptable, and that's the rationale to hire new people. I don't think the taxpayer who will carry that burden will be accepting of the fact that we are now complimenting our service to accommodate an 18% absenteeism rate. So when you say, yeah, we can fix it by just hiring, I'm a bit concerned about that answer because that's, is that acknowledging that 18% is okay? And if we solve the 18%, get down to the 8%, then what is that threshold in regards to that capacity building to ensure that you're providing effective service? So what is the number that you build in? What is that capacity issue? If 8% is your target, clearly, there's implications there, because if they're not there, you have to bring drivers on. What is the, that, that threshold of over and above the current riding, driver complement that you build into the process?
Debbie?
So through the chair, depending on, so when we cut the runs and decide, so we have a spare board, and the spare board is the work that is there to design to compensate for whatever the absence rate is. So the optimum utilization of your spare board, you want to be at 95%. So of everybody that is on your spare board that's there to deal with the absences on a daily basis, you want to use those people to 95%. If you're using them less, then they're sitting around and they're not driving the bus, so you have too many. If you're using them in excess of 95 to 100%, then you get to the situation where we're at right now, where we're canceling service on the street. So that's a fluid number, depending on what levels of service that we are putting out on the street. So we, we can do those calculations and say, so if we have a 10% absence rate, how many additional bodies do we need in order to have a spare board that we can have available to us to use to put the service on the street?
Through the chair...
Thank you.
I think, well, for clarification, though, because, I mean, we had one person say just, we implemented the 10-year strategy and hired 37 drivers without the buses, you could have offset the 18% absenteeism. He's correct, absolutely correct. But that's not why we hired the 37 bus drivers, or driving, hiring those 37, or whatever that number is, to drive new buses on new lines. That's part of the enhancement. If you don't have buses for them to drive, use that as a rationale to actually meet your 18% absenteeism, that is not a good business case.
So through the chair, just throwing more bodies at the problem is not going to resolve it. There's two issues. We have to get that number down to a manageable number, and, and accepting that in this day and age, and with the changes to legislation and the changes of the collective agreement and, and, you know, our aging workforce, you know, you know, 8% is no longer the number. It may have been the number back in the day to shoot for and hover above that, but we have not adjusted that historically up until this point. So that's the work we're doing now to understand, so what is that percentage that we need to be able to staff up our resources in order to put service on the street without relying on overtime? So the key point there is, we're putting that service out on the street at overtime rates. By having the right complement number, I'm still, I still have that same pot of money, but I'm putting that out at straight time, as well as I, I'm not relying on people having to put in 60 or 68 hours in a week in order to get that service out on the street. And I'm, and I'm going to say that the people that are doing that are doing that because they're dedicated to the, the members of this community, because they have pride in the HSR, they want to deliver their service to the customers, they understand how fundamental we are to them getting to their jobs, to school, and to all of that. So, you know, when we get into a discussion about absenteeism, everybody goes right to, you know, a dark place about, you know, while everybody's off. Well, yes, we, we're human beings, they have lives, there's things that impact them. It's our responsibility as management to make sure that we have the right number so that that, that, that does not negatively impact our customers.
So the point through the chair of the question, so that there's a clear understanding, is that we have a problem. And the problem is on the absenteeism side, not necessarily on the hiring side, although you have identified, you might have to revisit the 8% and maybe bump that up. Now, that concerns me, but, I mean, if that's the industry standard, I guess we have to grin and bear it, because every time you bump that up, there's a cost consequence to that. So I'd be really curious to see what that industry standard is, or is it just unique in the City of Hamilton? The next question I have is, and this is one that is often happening, you have buses that arrive five, six minutes earlier. They don't stay. So if it's a 10:41 time slot, people are trying to get there for 10:41, and the bus is already gone. It doesn't wait at the spot till the time that it was designated to be there. What are you doing to address those issues?
So through the chair, you know, I'm going to tell you that 95% of my workforce, workforce are out there, and they're doing their jobs, and they're operating to, to expectations, and they're, and doing what we're paying them to do. I do have a portion of my workforce that are not meeting those expectations, and the answer to that is accountability.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay. But I think you sort of touched on it earlier in regards to, on each line, probably building in a better buffer. So I don't want to, again, blame the driver, because I think you are sort of trying to address it through building a greater degree of air or, or process. So not only is it predictable, but you're also addressing with some dignity the situation of the driver. So you did identify that, and I just wanted to highlight that by doing that, I think you're, you're calming two things. You're calming the driver, which needs that, and two, you're accommodating the passenger, because now there's probably more predictability in regards to having the buses arrive on the time that's been set based on that built-in buffer.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Is that correct? So the, I asked a question earlier, 68 hours. I just looked up the ministry website. No driver should drive more than 13 hours in a day. Period. Where, at 68 hours, you're looking at seven days at approximately almost 10 hours a day. Is that what's going on?
So through the chair, we are abiding by the, so just because we have the ability to work somebody in excess of 60 or 68 hours, we are still abiding by the rest period between shifts and the length of the shift. So it's, we don't have, we're not out there having people work 24 hours a day. We are abiding by what our requirements are under ESA to make sure that they have the appropriate rest time. As well, when the drivers report, we have, you know, inspectors and superintendents there to ensure that they're fit for duty, you know. So it's not everybody just working a horrendous amount of hours in one day. You know, safety is number one. We want to make sure that they're able to drive the vehicle safety, safely, and, and we have measures in place to make sure that that is occurring.
So for, for the record, then, no, no driver's driving more than 13 hours a day?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, Debbie, would I like to find out, over and above the graph and the overtime and the comparatives, but I also want to find out, out of the 19% of the absenteeism, what percentage of the workforce are repeat, are, I guess, considered chronically absent? Let's put it that way. Is there, is there a percentage, or is it clear across the board?
Through the chair, I'd have to get back with, to you with what that data is, or maybe if you could say it again, I'm...
So, out of the 19% that are absent, are we dealing with a 5% of the workforce that is repeatedly absent?
Oh, gotcha.
Do we have chronic?
So through the chair, we do have a certain percentage of, of the workforce who are in our attendance support program. So, but keeping in mind, as part of that program, you know, there is medical documentation to support what those absences are.
I'm not questioning that.
Okay.
I just want to know if there's a, there's a pattern, because my next question is, what percentage of the workforce is tapping into the overtime? And is there, is there a consistency with the same people tapping into that overtime?
So through the chair, we have a group of individuals who consistently, year over year, are working the overtime for us. Is that what you're asking?
So what percentage of the, of the workforce would that be? So what percentage of the workforce would that be?
Through the chair, currently, I believe that number's around 30? Jason, sorry?
The question was, what percentage of the workforce is putting in the most overtime?
We can get you that number, Counselor. But there is a, there is a distinct group of individuals that consistently always are working overtime. So, and also just to clarify, there is built-in overtime within the existing schedule. So I'm talking about those individuals who have signed their work and are working extra for us, not with, within the work that they signed.
But through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Everybody's eligible for overtime, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
So, at this point, what we have is 30% approximately, that we'll get those numbers, but let's say, we'll throw 30 as an example, that is taking 100% of the overtime.
30% that's taking...
That's what we need to determine.
Yes, I can determine that for you, absolutely. We have the data to support that.
So, once I have that information, I'd like to tie that into what percentage are repeat, are the chronic absenteeism, if there are, if there is that problem, and I'd like to merge the two together to see if there's a consistency between the two.
So, through the chair, and that, and that is the type of analysis and work that we're going to be doing with our attendance management resource to drill down with that and then work with HR and strategies on, on how we're going to change that.
Because ironically, through you, Madam Chair, ironically, if there is, if there is a correlation between someone who is a chronic, chronically absent, but also tapping into the most overtime, there's a real problem there because it could be a concerted effort to try to maximize on the time and a half as opposed to straight time and wages.
So, through the chair, our initial look at the data is those individuals who are doing the most amount of overtime for us are not booking off. Does that answer your question?
Okay, but if we can have...
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Through the chair.
Thank you. Counselor Collins.
And I want to ask just a couple of questions related to budget because I heard budget questions earlier, and I know that when we go on camera, I won't be able to ask them. So just to reiterate, the transit levy in 2012, from the emails that I kept from the budget, was $34 million. Is that correct?
Through the chair, Mr. Zagarik, I don't have that number with me.
So, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the net levy for conventional transit and ATS in 2017 was $61 million, and I believe the conventional transit portion of that, the Counselor's correct, is approximately $34 million.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, the numbers that I have here, just to reiterate, 212, it was $34 million, and 217, it was $45 million.
Sorry, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, that's correct. It was an increase between those two periods of 35%.
So that, the levy contributions for transit is up 35% in five years, correct?
Sorry, through the chair, if I could have the question repeated?
You know what, Mike, why don't, why don't we just shove everybody down a little bit so that we can get everybody up there?
Sorry, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, if I could have the Counselor repeat the question.
Yeah, the, the information that I kept from the budget is that the transit levy in 212 was $34 million per the bylaw, and in 217, it was $45 million per the bylaw. And when I say bylaw, that's, that's the bylaw that we use when we pass our budgets through the annual budget process.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, so, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, that's correct. So that is conventional transit.
Correct.
Over and above those figures is ATS. So, so those figures just represent conventional transit.
Thank you, Counselor.
Perfect, so 35% increase in five years. And if I could go through the variances, again, keeping the budget information that I had, and we talked, for those who are on AFNA, we had transit discussions about budget variances because it was a number that stood out when finance staff present the budget in your variances, transit was one of the larger ones, and so we did have a good discussion. In 214, there was a negative variance on top of the 35% we provided for percentage increase through levy. There was a $1 million overage in 214. Can I confirm that?
Mike?
Yeah, so through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, that's correct.
And in 215, it was 1.6 million?
That's correct.
And in 2, sorry, 215, 1.6, and in 216, the number I have is 1.5.
Yeah, so through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I think it's in that 1.5 to 1.7 range.
Thank you.
And in 217, we were trending 2.3 million above budget.
Yeah, so through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, that's correct. Based on July, sorry, as of July 31st of this year, we are forecasting 2.3 million unfavorable for transit. So that is both conventional transit and ATS.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I had to ask those because I know once we go on camera, I won't be able to ask those questions, but in the context of resources, that's certainly the picture that's been painted through reports to Council over the years. So, those are the questions I have now, but I do have further questions once we go on camera on HR issues.
Thank you. And we have a first-time speaker, Counselor Skelly.
Thank you. Good morning, Debbie. Through the chair, real quick question. What are the average numbers, number of days that our union and non-unionized HSR staff are, are taking off per year in terms of sick time?
So absenteeism between non-union and union.
Through the chair, so we have a higher absenteeism through the unionized ranks than we do the non-union.
And what are the average days?
Average days? Through the chair, I can, I don't have those numbers for me, but I'm, we would have the data to be able to get you what those numbers are.
That would be good, thank you.
Thank you. Back to second-time speakers, Counselor Green, then we have Counselor Johnson. And again, folks, we're going in camera. It's time-sensitive now.
It's never time-sensitive.
Sure it is.
Not for me.
For me.
Well, there's some important issues that need to be put out, and I, you know, I, I want to seek clarity on the clarity. At no time did I suggest that we would hire 37 new plus operators. Just for clarity, we're talking about maintenance based on the attrition that happened there. But I do want to, some interesting points were raised in the recent funding increases. So if I could ask for Counselor McKinnon, or sorry, for Counselor Whitehead or Dan McKinnon, through you, to Mr. Zagarik, prior to 2012, I remember hearing as a taxpayer, what a funny word, as a resident here in this city, of council coming with like 0% budgets and really hard austerity budgets in the mid 2000s, 2008, 2009, 2010. What were the budgets like prior to 2012 as it related to HSR?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I think the Counselor's challenging my recollection. So, I would suggest, and we would have to confirm it, is that there were absolutely efforts to try to minimize the levy increases, and I can confirm what those percentages increases were. But there was an effort to try to, A, was to try to defer any potential fare increases. There were efforts trying to manage the level of the fare increases, and in part, that was through trying to constrain the levy increase as it relates to transit.
The reason why I bring that up is because Counselor Collins, in highlighting the enhancements from 2012 to now, to date, is quite right. My concern though, not being on council during those times, is if we're going to do a historical analysis on it, let's go back 20 years and let's see kind of what the trends are, because I feel like through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, to the Director, is that you've inherited kind of a very complex file that has with it cultural implications in terms of the workforce, terms of council that had chronic underfunding, austerity, sharp and deep austerity in the 2000s there, and we're just catching up. So, I just, you know, I'm, I'm careful to kind of wade through this idea that what we're seeing in recent years is enhancements, when what I feel like we're doing is playing a game of constant catch-up. But what I am still very concerned about is this timed spike, this massive spike, which I don't view as being a concerted conspiracy myself. I think that there's some deep cultural issues that need to be addressed. And, and if we're going to start using, you know, funding analysis, let's go back 20 years, let's look at the whole picture, and if we cut, or we had 0% increases in the 2000s, then we're not really talking about enhancements. We're talking about catching up to massive unfunded liabilities or deferred maintenance if we were, you know, speaking at capital or even operational. So, those are my comments. I don't, you know, I resist the idea that we're not throwing money at this, it's not what it is. It's about doing what we said we were going to do, when we said we were going to do it, and for me, that's just integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you very much. On the amounts that we've been going over budget, is paying overtime the primary culprit there?
Through the chair, in general, it is our employee-related costs, and it's overtime and our sick time.
Sorry, and sick time, sorry, what's the difference between overtime and sick time? In that my understanding is we're paying overtime when they're sick time, so wouldn't that be the same concern? No? So thus, please clarify.
Okay, so through, through the chair, so to pay the operators while they're off sick or an employee that they're off sick, that is creating a budget pressure for us. And then overtime is the actual payment while they're working. So the one, the wage rate at 1.5 is the overtime.
Thank you.
And, sorry for not understanding, aren't we paying people whether they're sick or not sick? Like, what am I missing?
Aren't they?
I'm just trying to understand.
So...
It's time and a half if you're sick? You get paid extra if you're sick? No? Sorry, I'm just trying to...
So, no, so through the chair, when an employee is off sick, they get paid, it's a benefit that, that they get paid while they're off sick. So while they're off sick, and I have to put someone in a seat of a bus to drive it, I have to pay that employee at time and a half if I don't have somebody available at straight time to do it. Am I answering your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I think, I think we're actually on the same page, and I'm not making my question clear, but, so my real question is, it is the case that paying for the expenses related to absenteeism is the primary culprit in terms of going over budget?
For employer-rated costs, yes.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
So, I'm not sure we're going to answer this question today. Others have been referring to the question. The question being, what amount of money, if any, and I'm sure there's some amount, do we need to pay in order to fix and protect our status quo level of service? So, we don't know yet, is my understanding. Is that a correct understanding?
Debbie?
So, through the chair, what I do know is relying on people to work overtime to put the service on the street is not sustainable and is not in the best interest of our customers. If I, if we want to have, if I want to make sure that I am not canceling service, I need to be able to have a body that I can assign the work to, not rely on somebody coming into work or begging them to come into work or making the, or asking them to work extra.
Right.
Thank you, Counselor.
So, do you have a number, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, do you have a number yet in terms of number of new employees and how much that costs?
Thank you, Debbie.
If the answer is no, that's totally fine.
So, through the chair, I don't have that number.
And we're going to have it in January? Question mark?
Thank you.
Through the chair, we are going to have that information to you, absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor.
So, I think it's worth stating and clarifying that the conversation we're having, as I understand it, is about protecting and maintaining our status quo level of service. So, in other words, we, Madam Deputy Mayor, we haven't even started talking yet about possible improvements and additions to our service, or other kinds of changes in terms of the routes and what that might cost. Possibly there would be savings there, that would be fabulous if that were the case, or possibly the improvements we need to make to HSR in terms of adding new bus lines, changing bus lines, will cost us money. My point is simply, we haven't even started talking yet about adding to our service. We're only right now talking about protecting the status quo. And I don't, I don't think that's an incorrect understanding. So, am I, am I right in terms of my understanding of the conversation? That's my last question.
Thank you.
So, through the chair, what we're doing in this moment right now is trying to ensure that we're getting as much service out on the road as we can to minimize the inconvenience to our customers. What we have been doing since I arrived in September and will continue to do is we're basically looking at every process, everything that we have done historically, and using data to make those decisions moving forward. So, you know, it's easy for me to stand here today and say, you know, that decision ought to have been made in the past. I can't comment on that. All I know is where we are today, where our opportunities are, and what work we need to do to move forward.
Right.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. So, Madam Deputy Mayor, just a point of information. A few weeks ago, I prepared a motion, that's a GIC motion, that has to wait until we have an LRT GIC, which is a motion asking for a report on how we need to modify our existing routes and/or add existing routes in order to feed the LRT when it comes, and asking for a price tag. So we'll be talking about that motion at our LRT GIC, but it's, it's relevant to our conversation, so I just thought I'd throw it out there. I'm looking forward to learning the numbers in terms of what we have to pay, and it seems to me we will have to pay some amount in order to protect and maintain the status quo. I'm sure that addressing culture problems and other things that are not, that are, things that are intangible, that aren't, that aren't, throw money at it, sort of solution situations, will realize some savings. I think addressing mental health isn't actually all that expensive. It's something we can take truer steps on, and that will realize some savings. And then there's just practical stuff. Like at a certain point, we need to, as Debbie's been saying repeatedly throughout this morning, at a certain point, we do need to hire more workers so that we're not relying on overtime all the time. So, I'm looking forward to hearing about the right mix. I'm sure that a detailed costing is coming, and the conversation will continue. It should be a very good and interesting and pro-transit year. Thank you.
Thank you. And last time speaker is Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Debbie. I think you're handling the questions extremely well, so good for you. So, so I think it's worthwhile for us to remember how transit is actually delivered in our community. So there are, you know, two peak periods, and then there's a gap in between. So there, I would think most of the drivers are working split shifts.
Through the chair, that's correct.
So that's pretty standard for all drivers or most?
So, through, it's standard across the industry. You know, the more junior operators obviously are working the split shifts because we have to ramp up in both the AM and PM peak periods in order to deliver the extra service.
I think that's worth remembering because I think it's, it's an important factor in how the service is delivered and how staff is deployed. It is, it is not just a simple eight-hour shift issue. It's, it's a split shift arrangement, and some of the factors of bathroom breaks and accommodations kind of factor very highly into this as opposed to other places where it's just not the same. So, I thought I'd mention that because it's worth, worth mentioning. Thank you for your good work on this, Madam.
Thank you. And now I need a mover and a seconder, please, for the presentation from Debbie. Counselor Pearson, Counselor Conley, all those in favor? Thank you. So now I need to have a motion to move into closed session. Thank you.
Dear Madam Deputy Mayor, in the changes to the agenda, we noted a delegation request from the Hamilton Bulldogs. They have since withdrew that request.
Yes, I was going to cover that.
So I will remove it on the agenda.
Yep, so 4.1, 4.1 has been withdrawn, the request, so...
So I just need a mover and seconder to further amend...
Okay, thank you. Counselor Collins and the mayor, all those in favor? Thank you. So now I need a motion to move into closed session respecting item 12.3 pursuant to section 8.1 subsection B of the city's procedural bylaw 14-300 and section 239-2 subsection B of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended as the subject matter pertains to personal matters about the identifiable individual, including city employees. Could I now ask the public and any staff who are not required to be in this closed session meeting, please exit the chambers, taking all of your personal belongings with you. Members of the public will be invited to return to hear further deliberations upon committee reconvening in open session indicated by the removal of the frosting on the windows and the elimination of the white noise. The committee will, in the event that they are in closed session for more than 30 minutes, will wait up to five minutes upon reconvening in open session before proceeding with the meeting to provide members of the public and the media time to return to the meeting room. So I need a mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Johnson, Counselor Pearson, all those in, wait a minute, do we have quorum?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
So, Counselor Whitehead, can you please help us vote here? All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone, for your patience. And I just lost my roadmap. Here we go. Let's see. So first of all, that the president, first of all, I need a motion to receive the presentation provided in closed session, moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Pearson, all those in favor, and to let the public know that staff was provided direction. Okay, so now we are going to continue with the balance... Okay, so now we are going to continue with the balance of the agenda. I need an approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Thank you very much, Councillor Pearson.
I'll move approval, Madam Deputy Mayor, but also just want to mention, I do have a meeting in my office at 3:30, so timelines.
Yeah, and I do too. Okay, so thank you very much. Can I have approval, please, of the minutes? Councillor Collins, Councillor Conley, all those in favor? Thank you. Declaration request has been withdrawn, this was the 4.1. Now we're on to consent items. Members of committee, you have before you consent items 5.1 to 5.4. Do you want to do them individually, or all collectively? All together? Committee's wish?
All together.
I'm sorry, Councillor Marilla?
On 5.3, as a result of a...
Okay, all right, if you're going to go 3, let's go, item 5.1, please. Can I have an approval of 5.1? Councillor Pearson, Councillor Skelly, all those in favor?
Carried.
5.2, approval of the 5.2. Councillor Conley, Councillor Vanderbeek, all those in favor?
Carried.
Thank you. Councillor Marilla, we're on 5.3.
Yeah, thank you. And this, this particular information report is born from a motion brought forward, I believe, just shortly after the 2014 election. And at that time, there was a great deal of discussion surrounding voter turnout, and how do we go about potentially putting together incentives or programs to try to increase voter turnout? At that time, I did clearly state that, if you look historically, the voter turnout issue in Hamilton, or at least the percentage, has been fairly consistent for the last 40, 50, 40 years. And I actually have old polling results from the 1980s. When I worked for Donna Agostino, I went back to those numbers, and they're not far off to what we're actually experiencing today. So the perception of voter turnout and there being a decrease over the last number of elections is more a perception rather than an actual, a perception of it decreasing as opposed to a presenting problem of it decreasing. Having said that, the numbers are still low. So, in bringing forward this motion, I was hoping that we could perhaps put together a plan of action in order to not just simply acknowledge the fact that it has been a presenting problem for some time, but also potentially look at creative ways of engaging community to be far more involved. One point of interest, though, is that clearly the campaigns are not all created equal. And you look at the Rob Ford campaign in 2014 in Toronto, that mayoralty campaign increased voter turnout in Toronto to 50%. And I think in this report, the one thing that is pretty significant is that very fact. And so if there is something that actually is a catalyst, it's either issue oriented, potentially, but more so, I think, individually oriented. Having said that, when you look at Hamilton's numbers over the years, you'll find that 2003, as an example, because of the, because of the, of the expressway issue, saw one of the highest, but interestingly enough, the stadium debate, actually, that issue actually contributed to a higher voter turnout in Hamilton. And so, and if you look at the last, the last four elections, the stadium debate actually was the most significant contributing factor to an increase of voter turnout. So, that I find very interesting, but the reality is this, I think that, that this can only be changed, even if we legislate, even if the province were to legislate mandatory voting, which I think is very undemocratic, because the option to not vote is your democratic right. But having said that, I think that there are means of trying to encourage people to be engaged at the local level. But I think the most contributing factor, if you go perhaps 50, 60 years, there's a cultural shift going on, because I think people like my parents who lived during World War II and were oppressed, and finally were able to exit the oppression, come to Canada and recognize the value of democracy. My parents have never missed a vote. Actually, every election, to them, it's an outing. My dad puts on his tie, a suit, my mom gets dressed up. It is something they celebrate. We have, none of that happening with millennials, or people even older in my generation, because we have no frame of reference to exercise the real importance of that freedom to exercise your democratic right. So, that has probably more to do with voter turnout or the lack thereof than anything else. Not that I'm asking for us to enter a war, but I think in many ways, when you compare the two, we have a generation right now that are really taking a great deal for granted, and it's really unfortunate, it's somewhat sad, but at the same rate, it's not something we should give up on. So I consider this an information report, but I definitely would like to look at adding on to this, and seeing if potentially there is means of being creative and being a leader on the issue, to see if we could, voter turnout outside of creating issues, that actually contributes to it, or having people run for office that contribute to it. But, all in all, I appreciate the information report, I think stats are interesting, but we should perhaps be doing more to try to encourage the engagement. What that answer is, I'm not sure, but it seems like everyone in the Western Democratic hemisphere doesn't know what that answer is, so we're in good company. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, and I've got Councillor Skelly.
Thank you, and just on that note, Madam Chair, through the chair, a recent, not recent study, but years ago, I read a poll results that the further from World War II that you're born, the less likely you are to cast a vote. And I think it's all about skin in the game, so it's really to what you were talking about. But this is actually the reason I have a question. On the, on page 2 of 8, provincial election, I'm assuming that's supposed to be 2014, is that, instead of 2016 in the, in the numbers that the staff put forward?
What page are you referring to? Sorry?
2 of 8 on...
Thank you.
5.3. That's provincial 2014, is that correct? I don't know what you're...
Microphone?
Through you, yes, sorry, through you, Madam Chair. No, it was 2016, the last provincial election. Yep.
Thank you. Councillor Skelly?
No, it wasn't.
Was it not?
No.
Then it is a mistake.
Oh, 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 sorry folks, through the chair, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. I must have mistyped it, I thought it was...
As long as it's, I didn't know if you were talking about a by-election or referencing through the chair.
It should be 2014.
Okay, thank you, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Whitehead?
Thank you. Clearly, the provincial and federal numbers are higher, and one of the issues that I thought of... Well, some of the issues I've talked about is the fact that, and I know there are limitations and capacity issues, but we probably have 50% less polling stations than the provincial federal elections. So, people travel greater distances, and I can give you examples in my own ward, where they traveled almost right across the city to get to a voting poll. So I'm trying to understand, what are the ratios, because, you know, this is my experience, but I'd like to see that actually, you know, the empirical data, empirical data in regards to how many polls and locations does the federal and provincial government set up during election, you know, based on population, versus how many polls we actually set up, polling stations? I'm not, because you can have 10 different polls in one station, I'm talking about actual stations to provide greater level of accessibility. Do we have those numbers? Have we done that analysis?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, we've not done the analysis. We do know, though, that they are, they have a much greater number of polling locations than municipal governments do.
So, and I think that's why you probably see slightly higher, there's always, it's a complex issue, so I'm not going to simplify to just the access to polling stations, but I certainly think that you make it easier for people to access something by walking to a particular station as opposed to taking the car, more than likely, they'll take and exercise their franchise and vote. And I've always found it limiting in the context of the city. Now, I understand the limitations we have, but I think that is a bit of a barrier, and I wanted to highlight that. The other thing I want to highlight, and I think the former speaker touched on, issue-oriented elections always depending on the issue, the issue is will drive numbers up, or personalities will drive numbers up. The other thing that isn't caught here, and it's an exercise in state, so I haven't seen the numbers, is they exercise often, I can't remember what it's called, but it's almost like a plebiscite on a particular issue, whether it's a legislation, or a right to smoke marijuana, or whatever the topic is, they put a subject matter out there, and, you know, theoretically, I would suggest that by taking on a mackerel issue, putting on the ballot, you would draw more people, especially if it's something that's youth-oriented issues, because you can see that youth is where we're losing the vote. I mean, they're just not coming out. Have we thought about, or at least have we done analytics on those kind of practices in North America, and whether or not they do drive up numbers in regards to people voting?
Through you, Madam Chair. When I was formerly with the AMCTO on their Election Project team, we did do a discussion group on whether questions on the ballot were helpful in bringing people to the polls. There was no general, the general discussion came about because people were under the same system that we are, and we're trying to figure out, how do we get more people out to vote? It didn't come to any conclusion, because there were a lot of different municipalities who had different races and different groups, and again, it came down to personalities, as you mentioned. But it was very hard, we agreed that it was very hard to determine whether that question or not was the impetus for people being driven out to vote. Now, I think that there was heavy discussion around, just like the level of candidates you get and the competitiveness within a ward or the city for mayor, that depending on the question, if it was a contentious issue, that it was agreed that that probably did, but there was no defining factor in it.
Thank you, councillor.
The reason I ask, because I know, for example, we did discuss it, is that if we had LRT as a question on the ballot, you can guarantee, without question, your numbers will go up in regards to people going to the poll. I'm not suggesting LRT is the issue, but when you provide a topic that there's significant division within a community and give them an opportunity to exercise their franchise, you will draw people out. So, back to the original premise, I don't know if real work has been done in looking at the results of this practice in some jurisdictions, and whether or not it has facilitated a higher voter turnout or not, and whether it's something that we should at least have a discussion on. I'm not suggesting we're going to do it, but it's, we need to start somewhere, and we've got to look at all the tools to encourage interest, people to get greater engage in the democratic process. So, I put that out there. I'm not providing any direction yet, I might do my own bit of an analysis and research on the matter, and how, whether it has affected change in regards to the turnout, and then bring that back, and then maybe we can start the dialogue then. Go ahead.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. I agree wholeheartedly, it was determined at that meeting that we had regarding questions, that it was just another factor that would be put on the table that would encourage voters to come out. So anytime we can add something to it, that would happen. And of course, that, the questions are up to council themselves, so that's in council's hands.
Now, just to dovetail on that, not all plebiscites or questions have to be driven by a binding decision. It could be exercised as a reflection of where the community is on a given day, on a given issue. So I guess the question is, well, often, under the municipal act, you know, you have to have a certain threshold on a plebiscite to actually make it binding, and I guess the approach I'm taking, it doesn't always have to be binding. And that's the other thing I would like to look at, binding versus non-binding, and how that actually engages the community in voting. So I just wanted to put those out for comment.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Eisenberger?
So I appreciate the report, and certainly the context of, you know, it not really having changed materially, you know, over time, is certainly interesting, but you know, it's still, in my mind, you know, unacceptable that we have such a low voter turnout, notwithstanding, you know, the consistency of it. So, was mentioned that between federal, provincial, and municipal, that there are more voting opportunities on the federal and provincial side throughout the community. So Tony, that's obviously something that's within our purview. So if we were, if we were able to provide more voting locations, it could very well have potentially an impact on voter turnout. So, and is that in fact true? Do we have less locations where people can vote?
Tony?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, we do, because the province and the federals don't use machines, they just still use paper ballot, ballots. So they have the opportunity to have many more polling locations than we do. The cost, if we are going to, if we were going to have the federal and provincial number of polling locations would, I'm not even going to give you a dollar figure, but it would be extensive for us to do that. So that's the reason currently that they can have more polling locations than we can.
Okay, thank you. That's interesting. Not helpful, but interesting. Okay, so I really don't have any more questions. I mean, I, for one, you know, I'm never accepting the fact that, you know, 36% is a good turnout number for any kind of election. I, for one, spend an awful lot of time in the schools talking to kids about their kind of sense of responsibility and getting them young. And so I wonder if there's, I mean, are there not things that we can do to encourage certainly the young people in our community to understand and appreciate what municipal government's about, and, or any kind of government's about? And I know schools do that from time to time, but, you know, should we not, at some level, institute a program that encourages them to think about what it means to them in terms of municipal government, and why voting is such an important thing to do? Is that something we've ever thought of doing in terms of having sessions? You know, I know, I know kids in schools come here from time to time, and certainly that's part of the discussion, but we have no formal program that really gets out into the community to talk to. I'm talking about elementary school kids. I think by the time they get to high school, the die's been cast. So, elementary school kids, in terms of educating them on the importance of their vote and what it means to them in their daily lives, day to day.
Through you, Madam Chair. There's nothing in the MEA that directs that we would have to go out and do things of that nature. That would be more a separate group that would do that, it would not be the Elections Office. We, it opens us up to criticism for promoting candidates, promoting ideas, promoting thoughts, rather than just promoting the election. So, you won't find municipalities promoting the election through the Elections Office, they'll do it through the Communications Office. So, having said that, we certainly, I'm sure that there are ideas out there and opportunities out there for us to go out and promote the election. I'm just not sure what group of people we would be doing that.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think you just took yourself out of the picture, but you put the communications folks in the picture. So, I mean, I, I understand why the Elections Office wouldn't do that, although, you know, between elections, when the election isn't, when the election period isn't on, that's the period that I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the election period, I'm talking about the time in between. So, that's certainly something that the Elections Office could look at in terms of educating people on the importance of elections, you know, certainly, certainly with youth, for sure. Isn't that, isn't that possible? I mean, I guess you wouldn't want to involve yourself during an election period.
Yeah, and outside, out of time election periods, yeah, I think that would be perfectly fine. We actually went to McMaster University and asked to make it a part of their political science course, and they turned us down, but we haven't done anything in the high schools or elementary schools at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
So, I'm always interested in educating and providing opportunities for us to get those numbers up. I mean, I think in a perfect world, democracy works better when people come out to vote. 36 or 37% isn't what I call a good showing, and whatever we can do to promote, you know, a better number, or a better understanding of why it's important, I think, would be helpful. So, I'm not sure who would turn to on this one, other than Tony, and say, could we, could we spend some time thinking about, and come back with some thoughts and ideas about how we can educate between elections? Our elementary school youth in schools, and through the District School Board, you know, some sort of a program maybe in collaboration with them, our public and separate school boards, in collaboration with them on some sort of a curriculum addition that might provide that level of education to get them more committed to being part of the democratic process.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think that would be a great idea, because it's interesting when we go into the schools, even for polling locations, and even the students are asking us why we're there, what we're looking at, so that's always interesting. And a number of the schools when we go into as well, run an election day themselves on our election day. So, you know, things like that we could build upon. So, outside of the election years, I think that would be at least getting them back, as you see from this, this report here. If you don't get them early, you don't get them. So, and that was a theme, I looked at, I can't tell you how many hundreds of documents and research papers when I went through this, and that was a theme in, I would say, 80% of them, that if you don't get them early, you are not going to get them. And... And, you know, it, there was psychological papers on it, there was female versus male papers on it, it just ran the gamut. So, it's interesting that you talk about, particularly the elementary schools, because I, I think that that's the groundwork where we have to start going at the groundswell, where we have to get people, young kids involved in it, and, and the teachers involved in it as well.
Thank you, thank you, Tony. So, I mean, I'm not sure where, I mean, can we provide some direction for you to spend some time collaborating with our school boards to see what, what we can come up with? And, and the one thing I would mention is, I know, I think it was Burlington or maybe Oakville that did a, a youth vote, they actually tallied up. Sorry?
Through the chair, please.
Well, you don't turn it around in one year, I would say.
Thank you.
So, so in a youth vote. I mean, I'm, I'm looking for opportunities to get, to engage the very people that we say aren't coming out to the polls. You know, obviously adults aren't either, but certainly the youth kind of engagement part in the, in the elementary school, they're, they're, they're the ones that ultimately vote less than anyone else. So, youth, and I'm, I'm characterizing youth as, you know, anywhere from 18 to 28 or 29 or 30.
Okay. No, 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 excuse me, folks. Yeah, enough, thank you.
So, so is there, I mean, the, the youth vote, or that, that category of vote is also, I think, an interesting aspect, to have kids come along with their parents and actually have a tally. Even though it may not be meaningful, at the end of the day, it's, at least it's an opportunity for them to join in.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, from now on, we'll, we'll put that in our work plans then for outside of election years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I've got Counselor Marilla for the second time.
Just quickly, on the additional polling stations, interestingly enough, because in the motion, I was part of it back in 2014, when you look at pre-amalgamation, we had, as the mayor would recall, we had 100, I believe it was 100 polls, and double the polling stations, we only have 10 polling stations now. I believe at one point, we had close to 30 polling stations prior to the electronic balloting, and the numbers are still lower and/or at par. So, really, it's, it's not really that simple. If we're that simple, I guess other municipalities would be experiencing increases. But it's also unfair to compare municipal elections to provincial and federal. Think of the airtime, both on radio, television, and all the play and print compared to that of municipal, and the fact that it's, you're voting really for a leader as opposed to the individual candidate. We can't compete with that at that level, having, especially the national or provincial level. But having said that, said that, their numbers have increased dramatically as well, because there used to be at the federal, at provincial level, in the upper 70s in voter turnout. As you can see, they're, they're going down as well. So, again, I think it's this alienation of the system, not appreciating, or not appreciating the democratic process, and also taking that process for granted, is probably the number one contributing factor. And I'm not in the purport to know the answer, but as everyone has indicated, we shouldn't stop trying, and I appreciate all of that I've heard. Thanks.
Thank you. So now, 5.3, may I please have a motion to receive its information? Counselor Pearson, Counselor Vanderbeek, all those in favor. Thank you. Now we're on 5.4, this is Bill 68, modernization of Ontario's Municipal Election Act. May I have a mover and a seconder to get it on the table? Counselor Marilla, Counselor Pearson, Counselor Pearson, question.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. If I could, just reviewing this to Nicole Audi. Nicole, I just noticed, and just for, I'm, I'm a little bit confused, and just want to be sure I'm reading this right, it's saying that the maximum contribution that a candidate for mayor can contribute is 7,500, this is on page three or four, plus 20 cents per elector, or maximum 25,000, whichever is less, correct? And it's also the same for a candidate? Is that correct?
Lower than 2,000.
No, no, below that. So the, so a mayor of the city of Toronto, the maximum he can have spend in his election is $25,000?
Okay, Nicole, microphone, please.
Sorry, I can't hear you either, sorry. Thank you.
I can confirm that this is what's in the municipal act. I have not double-checked in whether the same exists in, in the Toronto Act or if it's different, so I can follow up on you. Certainly I can follow up on that. I apologize, I don't have Lisa here with me today, but I can certainly find that out for you.
Thank you. Counselor Pearson?
So that raises a question. So in the Toronto Act, I, to know, I didn't realize that Toronto can set their own guidelines for the election?
No, sorry, through you, Madam Chair. They are different Acts, that's all I'm saying. So I don't, I have not gone and confirmed whether they are exactly the same. I suspect that they are, but I can confirm that for you. So I'm not saying that they are different, I just want to double-check before I answer for you.
Okay, so, I guess so, I'm back to the same question. And so any, any municipality, doesn't matter how big or small, the maximum both a candidate for mayor and a candidate for council can contribute is 25,000. Is that what I'm reading?
Whichever is the lesser of those two calculations, that's correct.
That's it, thank you. And the next is, I just wanted to ask, is on page 4 of 4, with regards to, it says the clerk now will be responsible to verify contributions, because this was a major issue in, in compliance audit at the end of the 2014 election, with regards to contributions made by corporate donors, which aren't allowed to make anymore anyways. So I don't know whether that still stands, that they, they can't contribute over 5,000, it'll be up to the clerk, and then what, where does the onus go on, on penalties? Is it on the contributor?
So, I don't believe that that section of the municipal act has changed, sorry, in terms of the municipal elections act. I don't believe that the onus has changed at all, so it would remain the same. And this, yeah, so that this provision does add additional responsibilities on the clerk to manage that, and that's certainly something we're going to need to address coming up through the next election. Through you, Madam Chair.
Counselor?
And the responsibility will be, thank you through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, for the clerk to verify if there's been any wrongdoing with regards or overage in contributions, let's put it that way. And then it'll be up to the clerk by reading here, to take, to have this go before compliance audit. Now to the contributor though, it's not to the candidate, correct?
Sorry, so it's the, if the candidate, it's the, sorry, the, through you, Madam Chair, the, it's, it would be the same process as it was before insofar as the, where the onus lies, on whether it's the contributor being prohibited or the candidate in terms of accepting the contribution? So that has not changed.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, I'll, I'll take my questions offline further on this, because I still think there's a gray area, because that's what we had in the 2014 election, is how does a candidate know what dollars a contributor has given to everyone else that's running, as opposed to just the candidate knowing what they've received?
Yes, and certainly that, that is, that it does remain, they have not addressed that issue in the changes, so that, that situation, that concern is, is not, not any different here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
That's a good question, because then if contributor over contributed, which candidate is responsible for returning the money? And so it's, it's, it's a silly piece that needs to be addressed, and I hope that we are arguing that that needs to be clarified and addressed. What isn't here, so my understanding is they also set up a PAC. So corporate and unions can now donate to a PAC, a third party, for advertising on municipal campaigns for candidates. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, that is my understanding.
Do we, do we know what the, the rules, rules are on that yet? Because it is material to understanding how the election process will unfold.
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair. So they, there is, I can certainly follow up on those for you. I don't have that in the report, but I can provide that additional information. I don't have it with me.
So they've cut off union and corporate donations for candidates? But they're allowing it for third-party advertising? Is that correct?
Yes, so there are, there is this separate, this separate opportunity, yes, that those, sorry, I apologize, I'm stumbling on my words. So through you, Madam Chair, yes, there is a separate third-party advertising where those, where those advertisers can put out those, that information? Yes, that is true.
Yeah, and I just want to highlight hypocrisy, and I'm not arguing that unions and corporations should donate to candidates, but I just have in real trouble reconciling in my own mind why it's okay for them to donate to a third party, which to me would be even, you know, it's challenging, I would say, and I would suggest, might be even less accountable in regards to the scrutiny that takes place during election. I want to highlight the hypocrisy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so 5.4, please, we already have it on the table, all those in favor. Thank you. Now we're into discussion items. 8.1, this is the Business Improvement Area Committee Report. May I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Vanderbeek, Counselor Marilla, all those in favor. 8.2, we have capital grant funding programs update. From Deputy Mayor, that was withdrawn during the agenda? Oh, I apologize. Thank you, that's been withdrawn, so we're on to 8.3, and this is the Hamilton Wentworth School Board Liaison Committee, and this is the Minutes from Such. Counselor, or sorry, Mayor Eisenberger, Counselor Aiden Johnson, all those in favor. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Counsel-
So sorry, Madam Deputy Mayor, that-
Stephanie.
Isn't, they aren't the minutes, it is actually a report for-
Recommendation. So there are, it's one recommendation, so please beware of what you just approved of. Anybody have any questions or wants to recant? So, it's done. So 8.4, and we're on to the disposition of city-owned lands. Hang on, let me get to my roadmap. This is a reminder that the discussion of private and confidential Appendix B to Report PED 17190 would be pursuant to Section 8.1 Subsection of the City's procedural bylaw 14-300 and Section 2392 Subsection C of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended as the subject matter pertains to proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land for city purposes. Are there any discussions respecting 8.4?
Yes.
You have a discussion, sir?
I have a question.
You have a question?
I have a question, yes.
Have a question? Okay, so, maybe you might want to whisper it to our friend Stephanie to find out whether this should go in camera or not.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I believe Counselor Pearson said her question was in the public report. Counselor-
It's in the public report.
They're both in the public report.
So we're okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Conley.
Thank you. Just on, on item C of the recommendation, I like to change that a little bit, and just say, as per the capital closing policy, all proceeds net of the transaction cost go to the original funding source. It's trying to tell me where-
Which is?
Well, I-
Oh, I see.
Not sure, and I, I think it's the Taro, Taro reserves, but I understand it could be other places. I just want to confirm that. By, by doing this, it confirms, by doing the amendment, it confirms it'll go to the places that it should be going to, that's all.
So the original funding source should be reimbursed?
That's right.
Thank you. So, staff?
Maybe Glenn.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a correction amendment, if you will. So Glenn Norton, would you please help us with that?
Through the chair, if, if I may, this property was purchased from the same two accounts and in the same proportions as what we're proposing to return the funds to. So Counselor Conley's motion is, I think, probably redundant, because we plan on doing that anyway, sir?
Well, it's not redundant in that, it happened through the chair, sorry. It happened 2013. I don't know what's redundant and what's not. By doing the amendment, it assures that funding goes to the proper places, rather than dictating it here, that's all. And if it's, and if this is the case, God bless you.
Thank you, and Mike Segarek just wants to chime in, please. Mike?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, if the amendments approved, we would review the original funding sources, as suggested in the reports. My interpretation of the information in the report is that half came from what previously was a Newalta royalties reserve, and 50% I suspect came from WIPs, from former Stony Creek Urban Design WIPs, which would be the capital levy. And so in keeping with the capital closing policy, if that is what is approved, we would apply again that policy. So if it's, if the 50% came from capital levy, it would go back to, for instance, unallocated capital reserve, and if 50% came from the reserve, royalties reserve, 50% would go back to the royalties reserve. So in keeping with our capital closing policy.
So, Mr. Con, or Counselor Conley, are you, are you happy with that, or do you definitely want to make sure?
I think my amendment says the same thing, but I don't have a history of that, and, and even Mike said, I think it came from here, my memory is. I'd rather have the research done to make sure-
Sure.
To where it was supposed to go.
So your amendment, your amendment was to go back to the original funding source, which should cover all that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So there's an amendment on the floor, moved by Counselor Conley, seconded by Counselor Pearson. On that amendment, Counselor Collins?
And, and that's fine when the dollar values are the same, but I'm not certain they are the same, and so where there's a profit, I think that there's some question there. So are we sticking to the old percentages, or would we allow some discretion with the profit that's been made on the property to be invested in capital in Stony Creek? That would be my question.
I never thought of that.
So, are you asking then we should put another amendment on the floor stating that any such profits should then go to? If we refund all the, the funding sources, that accomplishes this?
It was made, it was an investment made, and, and there's appreciation that's occurred, I'm assuming. I don't have the original one in front of me here, but I do know what the sale amount is. And so I think there's a desire to invest that in capital, but to keep it in Stony Creek, which I don't have a problem with, because it's money we wouldn't have had in the first place had we not bought it years ago.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mike Segarek just wants to chime in again, so just to get clarity. Yes? Mike?
So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, if it's the intent of committee that any proceeds over and above the initial investment go to the Stony Creek Reserve, so we do have former municipality reserves, and so the amendment could be further amended to make reference that any proceeds over and above the original investment go to the Stony Creek Reserve.
Just to be clear, I believe that the question was, should the profits go back to the Stony Creek Urban Design Capital Funds? That's not the same as the reserves. So it's the Stony Creek Capital Funds, which is, is a totally different animal, correct, Counselor Collins?
I think that was the intent of what Counselor Conley was suggesting earlier.
So we have one amendment in front of us that says everything goes back to the original funding source, and then we have one on top of that, which I believe should all go into one, because it's, it's relating to the same thing, that any, if there are ever any profits to, to be received from this transaction, those profits then would go to the Stony Creek Urban Design Capital Fund.
I don't-
Correct or no?
Just to be clear-
Am I got that right?
I would suggest that, you know, certainly the terms and conditions can go forward, as has been presented in camera, and are an option for us. Where those resources go could come back in the form of an information report with Counselor Conley's, or a discussion with staff, and we could sort that out later. The sale is separate from where the, the sale of the money-
Okay.
The monies go-
So, again, I know that Stephanie's going to jump on this, we're getting into in-camera stuff. No, thank you, Stephanie.
No, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I think what I understood, if Counselor Conley wants to go forward, because it's, it's moved and seconded, so it's on the floor right now, is that in keeping with the capital, capital closing policy, the funding be returned to the original funding sources. However, any profits that were made would then go into just the Stony Creek Reserve, which is not the urban design, separate. Not the royalties, yes.
Okay, Counselor Collins, you still have the floor?
We're good with that, Counselor. We're kind of going by the seat of our pants here.
Sure.
So I know what the intent is, I just don't want to direct it somewhere and then have to come back and make an amendment. So I think going ahead with the terms and conditions that are here are perfect.
Okay.
I think we're all in agreement on that. And where the funds go after the sale has been done, we should refer to staff and Counselor Conley to come back and make sure we're all on the same page. That's all. I think we all know what the intent is, and that is to reinvest those profits back into Stony Creek. How that happens, through the reserve process. I think finance could certainly help Counselor Conley come back with whatever that direction might be.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor right now, that is to return all the monies back to the original funding sources. monies back to the original funding sources. And what you're suggesting is that Counselor Conley work with the staff to come back with another report if there's any regarding the profits. All right? We're good with that? Stephanie, we got all that? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor. Thank you. So, now, we're on to motions. 9.1. This is 18 Sinclair Court, Hamilton. Just a reminder, excuse me, I have to read this. Just a reminder that a discussion of private and confidential Appendix B to this motion will be pursuant to Section 8.1 Subsection C of the City's procedural bylaw 14-300 and Section 2392 Subsection C of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended as the subject matter pertains to a proposed or pending acquisition of land for city purposes, labor relations, or employee negotiations. Counselor Collins, would you like to introduce your motion?
Yep. Ms. Dobrosky was here earlier. I don't think she's left. She was here for most of the day, and I don't think anyone anticipated the HSR issue lasting as long as it did. This matter's been to public works, I think, twice now. It was referred back in terms of, one of the options was to purchase the lands. And of course, anyone who had the opportunity to read Matthews' columns on slopes and the escarpment and problems associated with it would have read about Ms. Dobrosky's situation here on 18 Sinclair. And the top of the slope is, at this point now, it's just a couple of feet from her foundation. And similar to Hickson Road, where the house was literally falling into the creek, she's not too far behind, and that property was just around the corner. So, this is one of the options. This is the one that Ms. Dobrosky, I think, prefers. And this is one, I think, that the neighbors who live in the area, the alternative to this is take down the trees in the valley, rebuild the slope on our land and at our cost. And these costs are almost comparable. So, when you look at the financials, this is a little bit higher than the other one, but there's no environmental impact on this one. And it's very similar to what we've done with the Hickson Road property. So, I'm certainly willing to answer any questions. Again, Ms. Dobrosky was here but has had to leave. She is a single senior and was here with her friend who had driven her to the meeting. So, I'd be prepared to answer any questions at this point. And we'd do the same for the in-camera as well.
Okay. Thank you. And just for clarity, we don't have that motion in front of us?
Can we do that?
I'm looking through my roadmap. 9.1 is in your book? 9.1. No, I read it from the roadmap. Thanks for interrupting. So, we've got so far a list of speakers. We've got Counselor Whitehead, and then we have Counselor Farr. No? Okay.
So, I certainly support the motion. The one caveat, and maybe Legal can help me with this. When houses are built, we put them through a litany of studies, hydrogeological, stability grading, all those kinds of things. So, I guess the question I have is, when this house was built, did it predate those high standards we have in place today?
Through you, Madam Chair. So, unfortunately, I don't have the specifics, but what I can tell you is that obviously the building permits that are issued for a house are based on when the, like, the standards that are there at the time. So, certainly, if this house is of any age, the standards would have been different when those, I'm assuming that they would have been different at that point in time. So, that's the most that I can say. Certainly, things have changed and evolved. We have more information. We have, you know, different understandings of things. So...
So, I appreciate the answer, and I think it's important to ask that, because, I mean, I certainly wouldn't want to put the city in a situation where buying every property that has a deficiency as a result of erosion or other issues. This one is unique, because we didn't actually have the policies in place to protect it. In the last 10, 15 years, we do. So, I would suggest, and, you know, I made this about parking. We've allowed commercial corridors to be built, but we didn't have the appropriate ratios in regards to square footage versus parking. And then, we find ourselves in a situation where those commercial areas are being started because there's not adequate parking. So, in those cases, I always believe that we have responsibility. If we create the standards and we didn't have those checks and balances in place, then it becomes our problem, not the commercial or, in this case, the residential homeowner's problem. So, I certainly will hardly support what's before us here today.
Thank you. And I believe that finishes the speaker's list. So, on the 8.4, moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Marilla. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Carrie, thank you. Are there any notices of motion?
How much is that? 9.1.
That was 9.1. Are there any notices of motion? Counselor Whitehead?
Well, it's general information.
Okay. Well, I'm not there yet. General information. Change the page. First of all, before we get into that, may I please have a motion to approve the amendments to the outstanding business list? Please remember that Item A II, Escarpment Rehabilitation, has been pulled from the agenda, so it cannot be removed from the outstanding business list. So, the amendment to the amendment of the outstanding business list, may I please have a mover and a seconder? So, Counselor Pearson, Counselor Skelly, all those in favor. Thank you. Now, we're on to general information, other business.
Thank you. I'm just going to put it out of public record, but I do look forward to response. I hope a staff person can bring this back to the powers-to-be. But it's my understanding that with the LRT and with the policy of like-for-like, that we could find ourselves in a situation, for example, with telecommunications companies that have used old conduits with copper, which now they can go to fiber optics, which actually takes less room than the actual copper. But if it's like-for-like, and by understanding the cost is actually slightly less than the actual copper conduit. But we, and certainly fiber optics, understanding the service it can provide, greater than the copper. Can I just get an answer from staff, maybe at council, whether or not that's a negotiable item?
Okay. So, just to be clear, I still believe we have the LRT committee meeting. We still have the GICs that pertain to the LRT. Do we direct that? Just asking. It's procedure.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Yes, anything, there is a council, there is a council resolution that states that anything LRT must go to the LRT meeting. However, I understand Counselor White is asking for a response. However, I don't believe there's any staff here.
At council.
Right now, I'm not asking for the response. I'm putting it out as a matter of public record to give staff an opportunity to bring response back to the appropriate body.
That's good. Okay. I heard council. That's why I was asking.
It is a time-sensitive.
So, to the appropriate body?
Yes, which would be the LRT subcommittee. But I don't believe there's any staff here to take that direction. That's what I'm saying.
I was hoping staff, somebody here, or even the clerks could actually send to the appropriate staff.
I will. I will.
Thank you.
So, that answer would go to the appropriate committee. But I want to put it out there because there is a time-sensitive issue around that kind of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, now, we are, yes, ma'am?
Yes? Thank you. Through the chair. I don't know if anyone here can speak to. Do we know when the next, when we will find out if we've made the shortlist or the next list for Amazon?
Well, I don't see Mr. Murray here, so that's a problem. So, Glenn, do you want to tackle that one?
Through the chair. We're very much at the mercy of Amazon. They have, the only date they have given publicly is that we shall decide in 2018.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that's a very wide range. We would certainly hope, Counselor, that it would be sooner than that, but we have been given no indication of a date.
Through the chair. Have they given you an idea of whether or not there'll be different stages in terms of progress, meeting with potential successful groups, cities?
Through the chair, again, they've given us very little direction. We can assume that. That would make most sense, exactly as you have outlined, Counselor. They have not committed to that process.
Thank you. Thank you. So, now, we're on to private confidential. May I have a mover and a seconder, please, for the closed session minutes from October 18th? Counselor Whitehead, Counselor Farr, minutes. All those in favor. Thank you. And now, we have 12.2. If there's any questions, anything that needs to be discussed, we'll have to go in camera. If there are no questions, I would like to turn the chair over to Counselor Green. I will move 12.2. I'm looking for a seconder.
I'll second that for you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Farr. Oh, sorry.
All is in favor? Carrie.
Carrie. So, we don't need to go in, so I'll take the chair back. Thank you. We don't need to go in camera now. And I need a motion, please, for adjournment. Counselor Pearson, Counselor Green. Thank you, everyone.